May we start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Vatalas.
Here.
All commissioners present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, will you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we have a bit of administrative business to attend to. Is there a motion? Oh, there is a motion. Who's it from? Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Cooper.
I'll second the motion.
All vote. And the order of agenda is approved seven to zero. Next, we have three sets of prior minutes for approval. Approval of March 16th, 2015. Absent were Commissioner Vatalas and Gordon, and everybody else was here. Is there a motion? Commissioner Evans.
Yeah, I move we accept the March 16th minutes.
Commissioner Cooper.
I'll second the motion.
All vote. You need to clear. All vote again. Okay. Interesting, that motion passes four to zero. Next, the minutes from April 20th. Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 20th.
Everybody wants in on this one. Commissioner Vatalas.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, I should not have voted. That motion passes five to zero. Next, the minutes from May 4th. Commissioners Niblin, Cooper, and Evans were absent. Commissioner Vatalas.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Second the motion.
And that motion also passes four to zero. Okay, that catches us up on the agenda items. Next, an administrative business is the designation of a liaison to the city council meeting. Looks like there is none. No city council meeting scheduled between May 18th and the next planning commission meeting on June 1st, is that correct?
Correct.
Great. As there are no consent items, we'll move to the one public hearing item. I'd like to remind folks in the audience that if you do wish to speak on any item on the agenda, to file one of the speaker cards and you'll have three minutes to speak on that item. That will help move things along. So, the public hearing is on site development permit PSD 791-15, use permit UP 041-15, and site plan SP 150-15 filed by Russ Orsi of Smith Development and Construction Company, agent for 7-Eleven, Inc., to demolish an existing 1,856-square-foot service station building and canopy and to redevelop the site with a new 2,480-square-foot 7-Eleven convenience store and service station canopy with alcohol sales at 700 Hickey Boulevard. Recommended California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, status, categorical exemption, proposed action, adopt resolution approving the project as conditioned. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. I am Assistant Planner Christian Murdock. The project before you would result in the demolition of all onsite improvements at 700 Hickey Boulevard and result in the construction of a new 7-Eleven convenience store building with a fueling canopy. This project would also include the replacement of the underground storage tanks at the site. The project will reorient the building to a more traditional orientation, which will improve onsite circulation and also allow substantial landscaping improvements. The landscaping improvements would result in a conforming landscaping situation according to the city zoning standards, as the current onsite landscaping is nonconforming. The project will also result in elimination of other nonconformities, including the entry driveways along Gateway and along Hickey, which are too close to the corner. One note for the commission, as communicated by the applicant earlier, 7-Eleven desires to revise its site plan. The revision would result in the elimination of one fueling pump and reduce the fuel canopy size. Plans have been provided to the commissioners and there is a copy for public review in the rear of the council chamber. Staff is supportive of the change because it results in a less intensive development plan overall. Staff believes that the project before you would result in substantial improvements to the site, both aesthetically and functionally, and requests the commission's support of this application. The applicant is here to answer questions, as is staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Niblin.
Yeah, I was hoping maybe I could get just a little bit of a walkthrough with respect to the signage piece. I was having a little trouble as I was working through the staff report, understanding that.
Absolutely. So, there are a number of signs proposed by the applicant. There is a sign plan in here, but it's not the easiest to follow with all the different versions of the site plans between grading, site plan, landscaping, irrigation, and so forth. So, perhaps the easiest place to start is with the freestanding sign, or also known as the monument sign at the corner of Gateway Drive and Hickey Boulevard. The applicant proposes to keep that sign in substantially the same place, but to substantially renovate it to match the architecture of the proposed convenience store building. So, you'll see that the base will incorporate the same materials as the siding and the base of the convenience store building, and there'll also be a decorative angled top to match the angled theme of the convenience store roof. Moving on from there, there are two main wall signs proposed on the southwest corner of the proposed building. They are channel letter signs internally illuminated. They will be on the northern and western elevations on that tower element.
Yes.
From there, along the building facade, there are two window signs proposed, one for an Citibank and ATM service, and then there is a striped window decal, which counts as signage, but it's not traditionally thought of as signage. Moving on from that, there are two signs proposed that the plans show for. The applicant has agreed to remove two of them on the fueling canopy, as requested by staff. One would be on the Hickey Boulevard frontage and one would be on the Gateway Drive frontage.
Yes.
And it would be along the trim of the fueling canopy.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Could you explain a little bit about the height in this particular area as far as the adjacent buildings are concerned, and then the height of the opposing gas station, which is on the opposite corner?
Sure. I don't have the exact figures of the height for the adjacent apartment buildings, but they will be considerably taller than this proposed building. Those existing apartment buildings to the south and to the west are two stories. This is a one-story proposed development. As far as the gas station across northwest at the Shell Station, it's likely that that building will be a little bit smaller because it will lack, it doesn't have that notable tower element that this proposal will have. But I don't have the exact specifications. Perhaps the applicant has that information.
If I'm correct to read this, I think the current existing height is 16 feet and the applicant is proposing 27 foot eight?
That's correct, to the top of the tower element, yes. The bulk of that building will be much lower, though.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Niblin.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Murdock, I had a follow-up question. The, it looks like the proposal is for a 24-hour operation. I was curious about what the current operating hours are for the gas station onsite, maybe even the Shell Station across the street.
Sure. So, the existing gas station, I have that picture in my phone, if you'll bear with me one minute, I'll pull that up. But the Shell Station across the street is a 24-hour operation currently. This gas station currently does not operate on a 24-hour basis, but it is open a considerable number of hours. Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m., excuse me, Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to midnight, and Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So, the difference would be primarily those hours between 11:00 p.m. or 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. for the bulk of the week.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Another question, follow-up now, just a confirmation. The current convenience store there now is selling beer and wine also?
It has a Type 20 license, which allows the sale of beer and wine, but when I visited the store as part of this application, I only noticed beer on sale. But they don't sell hard liquor.
All right. But they do do service on vehicles, correct, at that now?
I don't know the extent of the service work that they do. I know that they do smog work. They may do, you know, lube and oil change work as well, but it's not a full-blown auto repair shop, in my understanding.
And so, the applicant, 7-Eleven, will not be doing any sort of repairs, smog, or any, as I saw in here, even adding oil or anything like that. It'll be just convenience store and gas station, incorrect?
That's correct. They may sell motor oil for individuals to put in their vehicles or other fluids, and they will have an air and water station as part of this application, but no commercial vehicle repair services whatsoever.
Right. And I'm glad you mentioned air and water. I have a question as to, and I know you probably can't answer this, maybe I should wait till the applicant, but currently, they have on the plans, the air and water over next to the fence of the neighboring, I guess northeast side fence line, and I just, first thing came to mind was, I know there's a limit on the, from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. for running the air compressor, but if they moved it over across to the other side, it would even be quieter, I thought, but maybe I'll just wait to ask the applicant.
Sure. The applicant is the best to indicate whether it would be feasible to relocate that. Just looking at the site plan, it could present challenges in terms of providing a parking space that's appropriate, but that's certainly a question the applicant can address.
Thank you. Also, Commissioner Evans, I'd like to point out, condition 18, repair or service of vehicles at the site other than normal maintenance of fluids at the pump islands or filling of tires at an air compressor is prohibited.
Right, I saw that.
Okay.
I just wanted to confirm it with publicly.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
I know we don't have any leeway on some of the zoning for some of the heights of these signs, but is there any restrictions on illumination as far as how many lumens they're able to utilize in both the signage and in the lighting of the area?
No, our zoning code does not have an explicit quantitative standard for lighting. Describes it subjectively in the terms of preventing light pollution and spilling across property lines and glare and so forth. So, that's something that would be up to the commission as part of this application if it felt that there was an appropriate value to limit in terms of the canopy light or other onsite lighting or signage elimination to specify that in the terms of approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank you. I forgot to ask, on item 21 where it says amplified audio of any kind will not be allowed, but currently, they, if I remember, because I do go up there to that gas station, they have radio, whatever you want to call it, their local broadcasting station, I guess, on the pumps. Will this be the same thing on the proposed pumps?
So, this commission, this condition was intended to regulate that type of activity. Some of these nowadays seem to be getting louder and louder and more persistent, and so staff, in consideration of the neighboring residential properties, felt it was appropriate to prohibit that. Certainly, the commission could modify or remove that condition if it felt it was appropriate.
So, there won't be any of that then on the pumps for the proposed project, then?
If this condition is included, that's the intent of this condition, to prohibit those kinds of audio advertising at the fuel pumps.
Thank you. Commissioner Vatalas?
I had a question about the entry. Currently, they show an exit at the first portion of Hickey and an entry further up on their plan, and as it is now, you can go in and in or out either one of those. Is it going to present a problem for people that are used to going in there when you can only come out?
There may be a learning curve, and I'm sure the applicant would propose to address that with appropriate signage during a transition period, just as when traffic signals or traffic signs change, there's additional signs and flags to bring that to the attention of motorists. But the applicant certainly can explain more about its analysis of the circulation plan.
Okay. Yeah, because it seems like people are speeding up more as they get further along on the road and harder to turn in at that point.
Sure. We tried to balance in reformulating the site to bring this site into conformance with the zoning standards, so that did require some manipulation in order to allow their truck that makes the fuel deliveries to enter and exit properly.
Okay.
So, I suspect that's why they made that an exit-only orientation, but they can speak to that more.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions at this time by commissioners, I'd like to invite the applicant
Good evening. I'm Katie Schart, representing 7-Eleven tonight. Thank you for your consideration of this project. I would like you to know that we have several individuals here tonight to answer questions. We have Aparna Jonasia with 7-Eleven, and Blair Skelly with 7-Eleven, and Russ Orsi and Jesse Kent with Smith Development Partners, I'm sorry, Smith Development Company. They are 7-Eleven's development partner on this project. So, we've been working on this project for many months, and I think we come here tonight with a really good design. We had a lot of input from staff to changes to elevations and site plan to come up with, I think, what is a really nice project at this corner. It is a brand-new store that will be constructed, will be demolishing what's existing and rebuilding to current code, which, if anyone follows current code, means you're getting a very energy-efficient, pretty much state-of-the-art project, just in compliance with the codes in the state of California. So, the site itself will have landscaping that exceeds the required amount. It's a very attractive landscaping, as well as design, that is custom to Pacifica. This architectural design is not found anywhere else on any other 7-Elevens, so we like the fact that we have this new design in Pacifica. The store itself is 7-Eleven's new format that features a lot of fresh foods, fresh sandwiches and salads, cut-up fruit, all sorts of coffees in the morning, well, all day long, actually, but an expanded coffee bar for the customers. And Christian mentioned the revised site plan. We do have two MPDs, which means you have two pumps, a car can park on each side, so that means four cars can be filling up with gas at this station. So, that's the design that you have in front of you tonight. We are requesting 24/7 operations, as we've been discussing, and the store will continue the beer and wine sales that have been occurring at the store since 1983. 7-Eleven is in the process of transferring the existing license from the current owner to 7-Eleven as part of this process, and that's through the State Department of ABC. We have reviewed the staff report, and we are in agreement with all the conditions of approval. So, we are all here, the team, to answer any questions you may have directly of applicant.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions at this point from commissioners? Commissioner Niblin?
Yeah, I had a question about the number of jobs the new 7-Eleven convenience store and gas station will create in the, once it's up and running.
There are typically eight to 10 jobs at a 7-Eleven. The 7-Eleven system is a franchise system, and the operator for this store is a local Pacifica resident who will be operating the store. Very well-respected at our current store on Manor, so the number is usually around 10, and it will be the same at this store.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
One of the conditions that I saw on number 17 was for, does not authorize any outdoor display or sale of merchandise anywhere on the site. What is that? Does that include rental as well? I mean, we, I've seen a lot of the Netflix machines and the rental petroleum products and a bunch of other stuff that's out on the curb. Is that something that you intend to do, or is that, do you feel that that's covered underneath item 17?
Well, we did request a red box, the movie rental box, to be placed in front of the store. So, do we still have that in there, in the plan? Right.
I guess I'll bring that question back to you. What is your feeling on that one?
So, staff requested that the applicant remove that from its application, and the applicant said that was an important part of their business model, and so staff sought to address that with that condition, to prohibit those kinds of outdoor vending devices. They tend to be difficult to regulate, and one, from one comes two, from two comes four, and it's difficult to control once you allow it to happen. More specifically, our code does require a use permit for outdoor commercial activity, and so if the commission wanted to allow that type of use, it should make that clear by amending or removing that condition and expressing its intent for what it is authorizing, whether just a video vending machine, just petroleum or propane tanks, or some combination or other services.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I'll go back to my question about the air compressor and water hose. Could it not be moved over to, you have two parking spots over almost to the corner on your site plan? And I was wondering if it, I know you'd have to run a little bit longer electric and water line, but it would not be as noisy to the neighbors, I would believe, moving it over there to that far corner.
We're agreeable to relocating the air and water.
There's a.
Okay.
Do you want to add to that?
Yes. Hello, commissioners, Jesse Kent with Smith Development. That's certainly a possibility. I think one of the things we tried to balance, and I think one of the things that Christian and staff brought forward, was visibility in that corner, beautification, things like that. So, it'd be something we definitely want to take a look at, but if everybody was amenable and felt that was the better option, it certainly could happen.
Okay. Yeah, I just think, and I understand the majority of its use during the day, but I know how noisy I used to be in that field, and I know how noisy an air compressor can be. So, I just thought if you moved over there, I know the units are usually low anyway, so the aesthetic value might not be an issue, especially with the landscape on the corner right there, so that was just my thought. Now, especially that you've moved that canopy away from that fence line, too, it'd be an easy shot for the, another parking spot, so.
And if I may take the liberty at this time to address the revision, and I appreciate you taking a look at the revised print on such short notice, that was an internal decision made by corporate, corporate headquarters are out of Dallas. They have a whole fueling section that uses, obviously, site plan design algorithms. They push everything in through kind of a measuring machine, and it was they that contacted us to say that they were not happy with the proximity of the canopy to the neighboring property. They also were not happy with the width of the drive aisle, and to the previous question about access onsite and kind of the ins and outs, we were balancing the onsite access, obviously trying to keep people moving through, applying the offsite parking, offsite drive aisles, things of that nature. So, a lot of that is, was set up based on that old three MPD, multiple product dispenser setup. We certainly would be willing to take a look at access, and I don't quite know all the measurements off the top of my head to know what these new distances, what that liberty might give us, but I'm sure it's something that can be facilitative, the fear is not knowing how to get onto the side or bottlenecks or things of that nature.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
The last question I had is, I'm a real, I guess, grunge when it comes to the lighting aspect and the illuminated 7-Eleven sign on that high roof. It's very annoying looking at a sign, especially through one of the windows and then going past. I understand the importance of it, but I'm not sure that it fits in with the community and what we're trying to achieve here. Have you, in any other circumstance, not illuminated those signs or done something different in the area there?
We typically, so we have a company that specializes in the signage and does our site design and signage design, and typically what they have is a nighttime sensor in it that turns down the lumens after a period of time to a certain degree. If it's a matter of getting foot candle and kind of giving you an idea, because obviously it's always a matter of what the reality is, we'd be happy to provide that information and see what we could, you know, come to terms with. I don't know of a site that we have that goes dark completely, but doesn't mean one doesn't exist.
Do you have signs that aren't illuminated at all at that height, within the 7-Eleven organization?
No, no, not at that height. If I may talk about lighting in general?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Certainly with the proximity to residential here, it's been a key concern and something we've talked about, and obviously trying to meet our needs onsite, but also we want to be good neighbors. Talked to Christian about it, tried to provide, you know, answers as far as, again, the foot candles and things. We're certainly available to continue that discussion. Staff early on asked us to move the building off of the property line to provide a maintenance alley around the building. That's a concern for us from the standpoint of making sure that we balance the desire for that, which we can understand why. They wanted to make sure that we didn't leave a concrete wall sitting up against a fence that never gets painted, birds roosting back there. We were onsite today, and there's quite a bit of pigeons roosted up in, you know, the gutters are falling down, things like that. We understand the need for that. At the same time, we want to balance safety and security, so the placement of security cameras, the placement of downlighting on that backside is very important so that we don't get folks walking around there. That protects our customers, it protects our staff onsite, you know. We won't compromise those things, but certainly we want to work with you folks and work with the community to make sure we're not creating disturbance in the area.
What is your thought on, you know, 7-Eleven certainly draws a lot of foot traffic. It's going to draw a lot of foot traffic from both that shopping center and from the apartments, and, you know, there isn't a stoplight there, that's a stop sign intersection. Is there, do you guys provide any additional painting or additional crosswalk stuff that would assist in that, in that area, or is that something?
Well, the conditions provide for, basically, we will be trenching into the road, so it's obviously to repair any of the trenches, and then there's two-inch overlay through both sections of Gateway and Hickey on our side of the road. I think the actual verbiage is to replace in-kind, so whatever's there now will replace, so any kind of street markings. So, there's nothing specific mentioned about pedestrian traffic or changing routes of traffic out in the public right of way at this point. We have been asked to put a sidewalk end sign down at the end of Hickey. As you know, the sidewalk trails off into grass. We've also been said, been told that the traffic engineer will dictate red parking paint on curb and gutter that's replaced.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, thank you for that presentation. I see no further questions from commissioners at this point, excuse me. So, I'd like to open up to the audience. At this point, I have four cards for the 7-Eleven, is that all? Okay, great. I'd like to call Dan Stegenk, if three minutes to ask questions or make a statement.
And so, the speakers are aware, you'll hear a warning tone at one minute remaining.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone here tonight, the commissioners, for listening to us. I've spent more than one or two late nights here, so you all definitely have my empathy. Running this with kind of an open mind, taking a look what's up, I'm not historically familiar with 7-Elevens, so I spent the last 24 hours driving around, taking a look at five 7-Elevens, and my pictures of the event are optimized for your mobile phone. They're at this address, pacifica.city on the front page. You can look at them right now. I specifically visit the 100 Clarendon Store and the 136 Manor Store, and if any of you guys have not been there in the last six months, I strongly suggest that it might be part of your job to take a look at those stores. I came to the realization that 7-Eleven is a bad neighbor. You go to the Clarendon Store, they've got all kinds of unapproved signage, they've got signage in the bushes, they've got vaporizer cigarette signs hanging from the light poles, they've got, they've got a red box, they've got another kiosk out there, all the garbage cans. All the garbage cans are full of trash. There's only one garbage can on the entire 100 Clarendon location. At the 136 Manor location, which I understand is the same franchise owner, they do have automotive supplies there. They've got three bottles of oil in the whole place. They've got two trashcans there. Both of them were packed to the brim also today. And they've got some beautiful landscaping that was on the original plans, that now they park three cars on there 24/7, blocking a handicapped access point. All those photos are on the website, pacifica.city, if anybody wants to take a look at them. This is a major push into Pacifica. I understand they're buying three different stations with smog licenses, including the Cabrillo Highway Lindemar location where the Valero is. I think this doesn't qualify for a 32 exemption on Sequo. I think traffic, air, and noise are going to be affected, specifically because of the 24 hours, the extra traffic, and also, getting rid of three smog licenses. I think it needs an E I R and Sequo on there. The signage is enormous. A peak sign is the oldest trick in the book, you know. Eventually, they'll raise the sign, oh, we'll raise it just to the peak, bigger and bigger. It's already a huge sign. Three-foot setback side and rear, that's almost nothing. We let 7/11 into our house. They fed, you know, lemonade-flavored beer and vaporizers to our kids. They parked on the lawn, and they put their stuff all over where it didn't belong. I think we should not allow this 7/11. I think it's a bad idea, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Betty Duran.
To everyone. I'm Betty Duran. I live at 694 Parkview Circle, Pacifica, California. I'm here with many neighbors, among them Aldo and Lorene Cunio, who reside at 675 Hickey and have lived there since 1964. I believe they are the closest home to the proposed 7/11. I would be the next closest neighbor. As a person who has lived in this community for over 30 years, I'm confused by the process that has played out regarding this particular property and the proposed 7/11. If it had not been for the Cunios, I would not have known about tonight's meeting. I received no notice of these proceedings. I have a petition signed by over 50 residents of Fairmont, expressing concern about the proposed 7/11 at 700 Hickey. These signatures were obtained in less than two days, with less than a week's notice. Imagine how many signatures we could have received, we could have obtained had we had adequate time. Today, I spoke with an individual from the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control to let him know of our concerns. He is in possession of many letters in opposition to issuing a license to 7/11. Let me say that a 7/11 store will be detrimental to our neighborhood for a number of reasons, including, but not limited to, concerns about increased crime, increased noise, increased air pollution, increased congestion, increased traffic flow, increased incidence of trash, increased incidence of pests such as rodents, excuse me, rodents and raccoon, decrease in the neighborhood character and quality of living, decreased property values, increase of transits in the area, increase of foul odors from a very large trash receptacle, increased need for police patrols and responses, and the potential for increased burden on city resources. The hours of operation for a 7/11 are much longer, and will disrupt the quiet and peaceful neighborhood into the very early hours of the morning. I'd like to reflect a little bit on the Shell, excuse, yes, the Shell station, that's Kitty Corner. I have concerns, they are open 24 hours a day, but they have no beer and wine license. We have several concerns about the undue concentration of alcohol licenses. In Fairmont Mall, we have Ernie's Liquor open from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Lucky's open from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, Riot Aid open from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I would like to reiterate that I, along with many of the residents of Fairmont Field, that the proposed 7/11 will result in significant effects relating to traffic, noise, and air quality, that it will have sufficient onsite, that it will not have sufficient onsite parking to accommodate the anticipated demand created by this project, that the proposed 7/11 will not be harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood, and provide for public convenience and necessity in terms of sundry items, fuel and beer and wine, that it will be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the persons residing, or working in the neighborhood, or to the general welfare of the city. We are not against having a commercial enterprise, but we feel strongly that a 7/11 would negatively impact our neighborhood. In closing, let me say that we expect the leaders, that leaders will seek to hear and set and act in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Next, Lorene and Aldo Cunio.
Good evening. I'm Lorene Cunio. I live at 675 Hickey Boulevard, Pacifica. I have been there since 1964. My husband and I worked to pay for our home. We didn't work to have a 7/11 destroy the neighborhood. Sure, they're going to put in greenery, they're going to do this, they're going to do that, but once they're in, there's no holes barred. They do what they want. You look at all the 7/11 markets around, I've looked, I've driven my car around, I haven't seen one that I would want in my neighborhood, not one. And I'm sure none of you would either. I am very, very strongly against 7/11 being in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christine Mixon.
Can I give you some pictures?
Absolutely.
I made two sets, I'm sorry, I didn't know that there would be so many people.
After living in San Francisco for several years, I am not upset with having a gas station behind my home. My concern is for the safety of the community around the four-way stop at Hickey and Gateway. This intersection connects Highway 35 with Highway 1 at both Pacific Manor and Pacific Palisades. There is a constant stream of cars through the stop. Most of the traffic involves people who are anxious to get home as soon as possible. This increases the safety issues for pedestrians waiting to cross the street, and for the disabled safety at all times of the day. I have included pictures of my 88-year-old father, Bud, who was actually the first planning commissioner, Bud Spencer, here in Pacifica. He was trying to get to the Lucky Grocery Store on his scooter. You can see the Chevron gas station where the 7/11 is proposed to go. While there is disabled access on both sides of the four-way stop from the Shell Station to Fairmont Center, pictures two and three show that there is no egress off of the walkway for anyone who has mobility issues. Even if there were egress, he would have to go up the driveway where the cars are coming down, or going up the hill. Bud had to turn around and go back across the street, and because of the fire hydrant in the middle of the walkway, he has to continue and go through the gas station in pictures four, five, and six. In picture seven, eight, and nine, it shows Bud having to traverse the street, going in between the cars. In picture nine, the man walking across yells, "What are you doing?", to the cars going around Bud. In picture 10, it shows Bud going up the drive into the Fairmont Center with two cars driving around him. These pictures were taken at Tenenana Monday morning. Think how difficult it would be for the disabled during rush hour. The community does not want any increase in traffic until the problems with the traffic flow and access to the Fairmont Center can be upgraded. The families in the homes and apartments around the station do not want to have the noise, light, and problems with personal safety, which are intensified because the gas station upgrade and added alcohol, but did not address the issues. By allowing the 7/11 to upgrade, altering the environment, it will only make it harder to solve the problems in the future. I, for one, do not want to call my family and say, "Sorry, Dad died in an accident crossing the street." Thank you for your time in this matter.
No other speakers on this topic? Let me bring it back to the Commissioners. Any questions, comments at this point? I just wanted to see if anyone piled up. No? And we will bring the applicant back up to address these questions. I just had a spidey sense that someone wanted to pitch in here. Commissioner Nibblin?
Thank you. I think this question more for staff. I mean, there was some significant concern expressed about sort of the, I guess it would be more in the nature of sort of maintenance of the various components of the project that are required pursuant to the conditions. And I was sort of curious about what sorts of tools exist, you know, for the city and to address that kind of a concern, sort of the notion of upkeep of landscape, or ensuring that, you know, landscaping isn't converted into parking, or whatever, whatever the, you know, concerns like that, that all seem very legitimate, frankly. I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Sure. So, the city has a number of tools at its disposal. To the issues of the other sites, many of them were developed in the past, where site planning and use permits weren't necessarily as detail-oriented, didn't have a longer list of conditions. Many of them were just three or four conditions from time to time. So, we feel like this approval, if it's granted by the commission, will already set us up with a better framework, and a number of tools with specific issues of concern that will put the applicant on notice. One of those being a condition to maintain the site in conformance with the property maintenance plan that staff asked for as part of this process. Additionally, staff has at its disposal nuisance abatement tools, just like it does with any property in the city. So, if the site is maintained in a degraded condition, where trash or other items are prevalent, staff can pursue a nuisance abatement or cite the applicant. Additionally, with this site plan, there's the first condition that it be maintained in substantial conformance with the approved plan, and that includes the site plan and landscaping. So, should they convert that, staff will be able to cite them and compel their compliance.
Is there a process that would be theoretically possible to employ, to revoke even a use permit in the context of a failure to comply with the various conditions of the permit?
There absolutely is. There is in our code a process for revocation. It requires a public hearing before the commission. And so, you know, in an egregious case of disregarding the conditions, and in a lack of response to the normal enforcement process, that is a tool that the city has as probably its ultimate recourse.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and address some of the concerns raised by the, by the public?
I made a list kind of quickly as some of the speakers were here at the podium, so I'll address what I took notes, so feel free to ask questions, and I'll bring some of my team members up as well. Christian is correct. The newer stores with conditions of approval do have with them stricter guidelines for maintenance of the property and a whole host of items. And the conditional use permits can be revoked if the operator does not comply with the conditions associated with it. And one of those is the property maintenance plan that was submitted by 7/11. And the property maintenance plan did go into detail as far as the pickup of the garbage, litter, emptying, garbage sweeping, the parking lot, and things like that. So, those are things that would be maintained on a regular basis. And these conditions of approval are communicated to 7/11 corporate. As the personnel are hired for the store, these conditions are communicated to them so that the operators understand the conditions under which the store should operate and will operate. So, that will be communicated as the process continues. Let's see here. Not quite sure the order to take. In fact, I may ask Jesse if you want to come up and maybe help me with some of these. But as far as, I'll start with traffic, and then we can move on. But the traffic analysis is such that the use itself draws primarily from the streets, Gateway, and Hickey. 7/11s are typically not destination stores. It's a lot of pass-by traffic. That's the whole nature of a convenience store. When you're driving by, it's a, it's a convenience stop, it's on your way somewhere else, and the 7/11 will not bring additional traffic to this location. In fact, with the fewer pumps, one might even see that there's less traffic going in and out of the site. And then noise, as, I don't know if I've already mentioned this, there will be none of that amplification of noise, no TVs like you see sometimes at gas stations at the pumps, or speakers with the music. So, there will be none of that, no noise at the pumps itself at all.
Yeah, I would agree to that. I mean, as far as the model of 7/11 and choosing locations, it was mentioned as far as, do we need another 7/11, or the proximity to another 7/11. Gives you an idea of the model in the sense that, as far as traffic analysis, we consider ourselves a capture of current traffic versus a destination zone. So, you know, certainly, people take a look at this, they spend a lot of time analyzing these things. You know, this site being an existing gas station certainly lends itself to, to our type of business. It makes it difficult as a corner for development of some other type of business. We feel it's almost a replacement, like for like, especially with the reduction of the M P D. Certainly, the issue of sound going down, I think one could argue, as far as the service station element versus just a pure pump-and-go element, is, again, fairly similar, if not less, of a noise issue. It is busy there. There's a lot of traffic. We drove through the intersection this evening, and we think that we've actually done a better job of reducing potential traffic congestion, traffic impact, pedestrian impact issues by closing the entrance closest on Gateway. If you look at the site plan also, we did show the truck route of how we will bring fueling trucks onto the site. I can't speak for how they do it now, what time of day they do it now. Obviously, we don't run the operations at that site, but the truck is coming from Hickey and going onto Gateway just to enter the property, so not cutting through the residential area, which is, was pretty key in order to, to meet that need there. Something else I was going to say about traffic. If it comes to me, I'll.
Thank you. I'd like to understand the stricter conditions that are applied to how this new facility would operate, and in the context of the existing 7/11s, and the points that were raised today about signage and cleanliness, et cetera. Are there stricter conditions not applicable to the existing 7/11s in Pacifica?
When you said signage, in particular, what were you?
Well, the signage that was nailed to, I think, looked like a telephone pole.
Saying advertising signage.
Yeah, advertising signage, that sort of thing.
I'm not familiar with what the conditions of approval at the other two existing sites are. I'm not certain of what they've been asked to do by Pacifica, and likewise, I would say I'm getting more and more familiar with the signage ordinance. My guess is that it's probably not welcomed. It's certainly something we'd want to visit. And I think, I think the end game on that of talking to franchisees is the operation as it works, is real estate agents and development teams put pressure on franchisees to stay within the bounds of their conditions of approval. I can't speak to whether those people are violating anything in particular, but certainly, if they are, we want to know about it.
Commissioner Evans? Excuse me, Commissioner Gordon?
Thanks for, thanks for presentation. This may be a combination of questions for applicant and for staff. And thank you also to the members of the public who spoke. I did hop on that website that gentleman referenced, and the pictures back up the comments and the criticisms of the, of the people who spoke. So, at the other 7/11s, there is overflowing garbage, there is excessive signage. And so, you know, it's not just neighbors sort of speculating, it's actually happening. And so, that's legitimate, legitimate concern that it's going to happen. concern that it's going to happen more. I know you mentioned the property maintenance plan. How would the property maintenance, maintenance plan specifically deal with, for example, overflowing garbage cans? Like, let's say, let's say the garbage can is, is overflowing at 1:30 in the afternoon. Because I, is the property maintenance plan somewhere, is, is it in our materials?
It is. It's the final attachment in the commission's agenda packet. That property maintenance plan does not have an hourly schedule for activities. What it does is generally describe the daily walk that the property owner will do for outdoor maintenance. The commission thinks that's inadequate. It could specify a more rigorous maintenance routine or other performance standards for staff to implement and the property owner to, or staff to supervise and the property owner to implement.
As you're speaking, I'm busily trying to find where the, here we go. Okay. So, in other words, we're talking about a daily garbage pickup? Is that it?
Well, that's the, the minimum that the property maintenance plan commits to. It may happen more regularly, but that's not specified.
Right. Right. Okay. And, and in terms of, you should see these pictures. The signage is, the excessive signage at the other 7-Elevens is, it's abominable. What, is there something in the conditions of approval to make sure that doesn't happen?
Well, we do have a specific sign plan that the applicant is committing to, and the commission may consider approving.
I'm sorry. You know, it's not actual signage, you know, it's, I think it's advertising. It's promotional material.
Understood. And that's a, it's an ongoing cat and mouse game between the city and commercial operators. Some of them are good actors, some less so. The city does its best to respond to the complaints that are submitted, and it prioritizes those complaints and addresses them as adequately as it can with the staffing that's available. But signage is an ongoing issue, and it's a battle that probably will not end soon between city and commercial operators.
Is there something in the conditions that addresses that sort of promotional, you know, excessive promotional signage? I don't even know what the word is.
I'd have to look again through all the conditions to see if there's something specifically to that type of signage. Condition 16 talks about property maintenance and maintaining the site in a condition that does not constitute a public nuisance. And it is possible for excessive signage that does not comply with the city's ordinance to constitute a nuisance. So, that may be one avenue to address it, should it come to it, and the standard process not be sufficient.
And I'd like to add that I would consider signage to be signage. So, there's a certain square footage of signage that the planning commission's approving with this project. And so, that additional promotional signage is not permitted.
Oh, okay. So, it would be covered under the?
The sign, the sign program being approved.
Okay. 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 That's it for now. Thanks.
I believe too with the, with the maintenance plan, in particular, we call out per your ordinance, which was studied, and obviously, the language is adopted. It's part of our operations anyway, anti-vandalism, cleanup after a certain period of time. We have a computer system inside that is secure, straight networking, and it's used for 7-Eleven attendants to do sales, to do gas, to do Lotto. They also have an option on that that goes directly to a regional contractor if there's maintenance issues. So, maybe on a monthly basis, if a light goes off in the parking lot, I know we've talked about light nuisance, but again, we try to balance the fact if the light's off over where there's some parking and, you know, it's just an unsafe situation, get that light repaired. And then I think the staff's original question of making the maintenance alley, if we do have some downspouting issue or something like that, they can click on that, and then that gets it in our queue, brings it to our attention, and we can service those things.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon? Excuse me. Long flight last night. Commissioner Campbell?
I see the Planning Department Condition of Approval Number 28, which talks about the use permit granted may be revoked if any of the conditions or terms of such permit are violated, or if any law is violated in conjunction therewith, including any provision of the code, basically. And I, I look at the, and it cites Municipal Code 9-4-3309, which I, I look at, and it says any use permit granted pursuant to the provisions of this article may be revoked if any of the conditions or terms of such permit are violated. And then it says the commission, I guess that's us, would hold a public hearing on the proposed revocation of such permit. How does it get to us if?
So, we would likely have a code enforcement complaint and a code enforcement history of actions that are not been resolved.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would bring it to the planning commission for revocation at that point.
And how many does it take to come, to get before us? How many complaints are necessary?
Well, I don't think there's anything codified specifically. I think that as, as far as our commercial neighbors and here in the city, we would expect them to be pretty responsive to that. We want them to be good neighbors, and it's particularly if there's complaints about excessive signage, not complying with conditions of approval, excessive trash on their property. I don't have an answer for you for exactly how many complaints we would, we would, it really depends on a case-by-case basis. For example, if you have a site that is subject to a lot of trash blowing on it because of the wind and because of other uses around it, and we continue to get complaints, if they're responsive and they clean it up as soon as we tell them to clean it up, for example, we may not be bringing that use back to you guys for review. But if it's clearly egregious and they're just not, you know, they are the problem, and they're not responding to, to staff and to the code enforcement department, we would be bringing it back before the planning commission. So, it's not a cut-and-dry answer.
Right. Yeah, it's just, I mean, I guess where I was kind of wondering is if there might be like a, a three strikes, and you're out, or three strikes and you come before us type of thing we could get into special condition 28?
One thing I could offer to, for the planning commission's consideration, and something that actually Christian suggested in the beginning, is there could be a condition that you have an annual review. And at one point, if they're, you know, have one or two consecutive annual reviews where they're performing fine, maybe you can decide to cut those off. But at least for now, if the commission would like, that's an option to add as a condition of approval.
I think that's a, that's a great idea. Thanks for suggesting that.
Couple of questions before I go on to the other commissioners. One, is, has there been a, a history of complaints regarding the other 7-Elevens that you're aware of?
I would have to go back and look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Also, the traffic issues that were raised by Ms. Nixon, Mixon, are those, is there any plan outside of this project to address some of those?
Actually, the-
Actually, it was more around disabled access, the fact that the sidewalks didn't have ramps, that they didn't continue to facilitate access into the shopping center, that sort of thing.
Representatives from the Public Works Department are present, and they can best answer that question.
Would you mind answering that question, please? I just took a look at the photos that were provided. It seemed to me that the, that it's quite difficult for a disabled person to actually navigate that area safely.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission.
So, the question was regarding accessibility in the right-of-way in the vicinity of the subject site.
Right. For, for people with disability?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, we just did a recent project there, and if you notice, all the handicap accessibility ramps at the corners were changed to comply with the current standards. We normally do that as part of any paving project, because all of our paving projects are mostly through grants, and federal grants require that if you have you, an overlay project, that you are supposed to install handicap ramps at the intersections. So, the answer to your question is we did, we do, we do that. And this is one of the recipient of the recent ones, because the, the crosswalks and the intersect, I mean, the corners of Hickey and Gateway were all, I mean, the handicap ramps were all updated just recently.
Was the fire hydrant that appears to be in pretty much the middle of the sidewalk, was that moved at all?
Uh, no, it wasn't. Actually, the fire hydrant that was mentioned earlier is actually in front of the Shell station. It's not in front of this.
Oh, got it.
Yeah. It's, it's actually diagonally across from this location. It's actually towards the, I would say, the back 25 percent of the width of the sidewalk.
So, it's still in the sidewalk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Nibblin?
Thank you. I had a few questions, and one is perhaps of marginal relevance, but I would be interested in knowing whether there's, there's a history of complaints with respect to the current operations at the Chevron or the, or the Shell.
So, what I can offer to address that is we did route this application to the Chief of Police, and during his review, he indicated no concerns about the proposed operation. He did not comment on whether there was a history with the existing operator.
And then I was wondering, and perhaps it's not available, this is more for the applicant, whether or not there are any pro forma assumptions you can share regarding, you know, what you expect in terms of the number of customers after a certain hour, as we get into the, you know, the later hours of the, of the night. Again, whether the applicant has any information they can share with respect to that. And then I, while they're maybe chatting about that, with respect to the property maintenance plan, I am a little concerned about the plan in the sense that it is rather general and generic. It looks like it's a maintenance plan that really pertains to the, maybe the 7-Eleven region. And I'd be really much more comfortable with a plan that was a little more granular than requiring that things be done, done on a regular basis or periodically. I'd certainly be more comfortable with something that was explicit with respect to number of times a day, the building was going to, or the property was going to be checked for trash and things like that. Again, I'm not convinced that this is specific enough to be reasonably enforceable.
Understood. And the commission may consider as part of its motion to approve, if it comes to that point, to require the applicant to submit a more detailed property maintenance plan for the planning director's review and approval.
Thank you. I'll come back to my second question. Then, again, I was wondering whether or not there were any pro forma assumptions, or any, any assumptions at all that, that might speak to sort of what kind of volume of business you typically expect. Again, as, as it gets later into the evening, I wanted to see if there was anything to address concerns that were expressed about sort of impact later into the evening.
Will there be a response to that question, or?
Commissioner, I'm a pernagedaja with 7-Eleven. We don't have specific counts for nighttime activity, but we do know it's, it's very low. I would have to refer to going back and getting some data for you on that, but I don't have that right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans? Thank you, Chair. This is for staff. The, the Shell station with its convenience store, did you, did I hear correct that that's open 24, 24 hours?
Yes.
Okay. So, but I know the Chevron is not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, having heard from the applicant and the public, I'd like to bring this back to the commission for deliberation and to see if we can make some move towards a motion. I've got a vague sense of, well, not so vague, I've got a sense of discomfort with this. A lot of what comes before the planning commission requires us to make a determination as to whether something is in keeping with the neighborhood and, and consistent with the general plan, et cetera. It's tough for me to, it's tough for me to say that this is actually consistent with being a good neighbor. I think that we've heard that, you know, the, the use permit can be revoked. We've heard that we could make it an annual review requirement. But I, I think that the requirement happens when something, when a new project from an established vendor comes before us, and we're asked to approve another store. And the existing sites don't seem to be keeping up, keeping up the practices of a good neighbor. I, we've, I've been on the commission here for a while. I've seen many projects, most of which I'm, I'm very proud of the owners for improving upon what existed before and investing in Pacifica. And I'd, I'd like to see projects like that. And I'd like to reward folks for being a good neighbor. And I'm not, I'm not there yet with this. We're being asked to add another 7-Eleven, and the, and the existing ones, you know, they operate under what seems, and I completely agree with Commissioner Nibblin, rather vague conditions. They don't seem to be enforced. And I'm not sure I want more of that. Also, a 24-hour-a-day convenience store that sells alcohol that close to homes doesn't seem to be consistent with, with, with what that neighborhood's about. So, I just would like to make those points. Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you for those comments. I would agree with you on every one of those comments. And, you know, I, I'm sitting here, up here, we're trying to weigh both sides of this, this issue with 7-Eleven. You know, obviously, the current stores don't, don't reflect what I like to see in Pacifica as far as a maintenance plan. I do have some flip sides, though, I think, in, in this. And the one is the environmental issues. The replacement of the, all the gas tanks, the energy efficiency of the new building, all of that stuff plays into enhancing Pacifica in a certain instance. They do or will provide a very energy-maintained building, making sure that the tanks don't leak. They're triple-walled. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to having someone commit a brand-new facility. The other pro that I would put to this is what other use is there for that property? There's not a lot of other uses on that particular corner for that particular property that someone would want to invest in. And most of the traffic that would hit that would appear to me to be going out of Pacifica and not in Pacifica. You know, the flip side from my personal stake is that, is it an enhancement to Pacifica? Is it something that we really need here? Do we need another convenience store? I don't agree with, with, you know, selling alcohol 24 hours a day, even though, you know, sometimes I buy alcohol 24 hours a day. I don't think that our kids need it. I don't think that the things they sell need it. I don't think that the products they purchase should be consumed 24/7. But then again, I have been a customer of 7-Eleven as well. So, I'm kind of on the, on the fence here. My other concern is this intersection. This intersection, to me, is not the best location for a foot traffic area, and it's going to get foot traffic. There are a lot of apartments around there. There are a lot of people who are going to cross that street. But then again, on the flip side, I go, well, where else would it be? Where else would I have in a 7-Eleven where I wouldn't have these concerns? So, you know, I'm, I, I agree with all my commissioners' concerns and what they have, and I'd like to hear from them and see what else, other concerns they have.
Thank you. Commissioner Nibblin?
Well, I'd really like to just sort of remark on the eloquence of both the commissioners who've spoken before. I think they've done a really good job of kind of encapsulating the conundrum. I, I think there are some really legitimate concerns regarding sort of the current operation of other 7-Elevens. And I, but I think in the, in the broader sense, my, my perspective is that subject to appropriate controls, this could be a net plus. I really am, and I'm actually somewhat familiar with this area. I go running in that area quite frequently. And I'm not especially blown away by the current aesthetics of the, of the site. And I believe that what's proposed here, if it's maintained in, in a manner that frankly, it sounds like we have some tools to, to make happen, would be a net plus. I think the economic addition of, of jobs is, is a good thing for us to consider. I believe if we had a maintenance plan that was more robust and more specific, I could get to a place where I would be pretty comfortable supporting. supporting, supporting something like what's proposed. I think an annual review is a really good idea. I think that it ought to come back for us to take a look at and ensure that we are all comfortable, that things are moving in the right direction. And I do want to echo what Commissioner Cooper had to say. I don't think there's a need for selling alcohol 24 hours a day. I think that, to the extent we can, to the extent the law allows us to, we ought to limit alcohol sales to a period of time up until, I'd say, 11:00, but that's just my own personal comfort level.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, state law already limits alcohol sales seven days a week to 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., so there is no 24 alcohol sales at this site under state law. But the commission does have the leeway to establish more restrictive hours should it see the need to do that, or may consider doing that on an interim basis until one or two annual reviews have gone by and we can gauge the operation of a site. There is some flexibility and ability for the commission to do that.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Vadalas?
I think aesthetically, this is a much nicer project than what's currently there. They have additional parking spots that they didn't have. It appears that now that they've changed the gas station bays, there are less cars in the gas stations than there are in the existing. It does say on Condition 14 that they will not sell individual cans of bottles and beer in volumes, in small volumes. So people wouldn't be, sorry, wouldn't be encouraged to go in and have one can of beer and go out and drink it, since they only sell it in larger quantities. Also, about the garbage issue, I work right next to a public garbage can, and you can go by the garbage can, and it'll be totally empty. And half an hour later, you go by the garbage can, and it's pouring out of the edges because people from the public often take their garbage and put it in public garbage cans. I don't think that's always in the control of the merchants to keep going and changing their garbage can every hour because the public is dumping in their garbage cans. I know it's a problem both ways, but I think with code enforcement, we could monitor a lot of the items that people have issues with.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. While all the discussion, I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I did note down a couple things of my thoughts. Just, again, you already stated there's no sales after 2 p, or 2:00 a.m. That's the state law. I would consider, though, less hours if everybody else was looking at that. I believe that, I understand there's a concern for the increased traffic, but by decreasing the amount of gas pumps to one-half of what they currently have, I think that says a lot to traffic control to a degree. I know there'll be an increase because of a convenience store, but there'll be a decrease in the, in the gas fueling traffic. I'm being stickler here. I still want to see the air compressor moved over to the street side, sorry. I am in agreement about no more signage outside. I would not want to see, I even may have a problem with the red box thing, but I'll go with what the rest of my commissioners are looking at. But I don't want to see the picture, I mean, like I saw the pictures earlier, and I think if we can hold them to it, if they're agreed to it, to maximum signage of what's in here now. It's a major improvement over what is currently. Currently, I honestly think it's, I'll go back, I do frequent it because I drive by there and buy fuel, but it's not the best-looking site for Pacifica, and it certainly doesn't reflect what we want to see in Pacifica. So I believe it'd be a major improvement. With that said, though, we need the tools, as you mentioned, to maintain that appearance in, you know, often checking garbage cans, whatever we can do to improve those sites. The safety factor, I know, has been already taken care of because I've seen it up there, the four corners for handicap access. So I, that's, the, the fire hydrant, I don't know if it's, can a wheelchair get around that fire hydrant? That's a big question. I don't know.
It's on the opposite side of the street?
Well, I know. I understand that. I'm just speaking in general statements here. But yeah, I know, and it's in front of the Shell station. I understand that, but I'm trying to expand on the safety factor here, sorry. But anyway, that's my thoughts on that. I like the idea. I don't like the signages, but if we can control that, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. I sense a consensus growing, and I'm on board with that consensus. And it sounds like we're, this particular application is suffering from the sins of the other franchisees, which is probably a good message for corporate to absorb. And in light of that, it seems like the, where we're coming out is that this project could be approved, but it has to be under a tighter leash. And so it might be, I would be interested in hearing from the planning director a little bit more about the annual review that you were discussing. Yeah.
Sure. So we would annually review the project. I would imagine that we would time the annual review from the point that the building permit is finalled, so that it's actually under operation, and the planning permit has been acted upon. And so from then, we would have annual reviews. They would be publicly noticed so that the neighbors would have an opportunity to come and let you guys know if they feel that the conditions are not being met. And so, you know, the applicant would be invited back, and at that point, the planning commission would review the operations and would have the ability to adjust or modify conditions of approval at that time, or in the case where things have gone terribly wrong, they would have the opportunity, and we would notice it correctly for you to be able to do this, to potentially revoke the use permit.
Thanks for that explanation. So the annual review would actually be before us?
Yes, it would.
Ah, okay. That sounds like that has teeth to it. That's great. I'm in favor of, well, in terms of the alcohol sales, the timing of the alcohol sales, I assume that there's other vendors in the area that sell alcohol? No? Is that?
There is. The Rite Aid sells beer, wine, and liquor, as does the Lucky supermarket. Neither of them are open beyond midnight.
Ah, there we go. Okay. So I would be in favor of cutting off, as a condition, cutting off sales of alcohol as of, you're sure about that midnight time?
Yeah, the Rite Aid closes at 10:00 p.m. seven days per week, and Lucky's closes at midnight seven days per week.
I would be comfortable with any time between 11:00 and 12:00. I would also, I mean, I think we should stand firm on no red box outside. I wouldn't normally say that. It's just that the other franchisees, it seems as though there's been such a slippery slope that they've already slid down, that a firmer hand is in order. Okay. Those are my thoughts. Oh, and in terms of a stricter property maintenance plan, I don't even know. It could be the complaints about garbage and stuff like that. We could pick that up in an annual review if there's a pattern of bad behavior. I just don't know what a stricter property maintenance plan would really look like, but I'm definitely open to ideas of the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I think a more specific...
And there's nothing out there. There's nothing out there. And so it's a shame that it got, I mean, it was politics. It was all politics. But it was a shame it got derailed.
It would have been a...
So it would have been a fantastic project.
Yeah, yeah. Lots, lots...
Not TV?
Yeah, I think it probably would have, I mean, except for, it was an election year at that point in time, and...
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Everyone, excuse me. We've got a few more items to carry covered, and I think Commissioner Campbell has got to start all over again, so. Yes. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the team for getting the video back online.
Yeah, I can promise the TV audience, it's just not going to be as eloquent this time. It was a real gem. Yeah, so with the gas station, I mean, thanks again to the commissioners for all the great comments they've made, and as it stands right now, I'm in support of the no-red box, in support of lowering, reducing the liquor sale hours to midnight, which I think is consistent with what the other stores around the area have. And I support the annual review, and I'd like to ensure that the annual review includes with it, and what we see in it is the photos and any complaints by the residents nearby. And I would like to note that I, because of the 24-hour nature of this facility, I would, I would remark that the 7-Eleven owner is on a very short leash from my perspective because it is such a change in use. If, to live next door to something that closes at 11:00 o'clock like the gas station does now, and then to suddenly find yourself next to a 24-hour facility, that's, if I were living next door near that, I would be very upset with that change. And I don't know if there's a way to limit the hours of 7-Eleven to, I wouldn't say seven to 11, but, because that would be ridiculous, but something close. I don't know if that's even within the corporate business model plan for them. I'd like to hear that answer. Thanks.
Commissioner Cooper?
All right, I think I've been listening to the commissioners and what they requested, and some of the provisions that I would add would be the following. Require a more detailed maintenance plan that will include removal of trash at a minimum of two times per day or when trash is full. Provision of cure any maintenance or trash complaints within 24 hours of reporting. Include a dimming of light system during 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Require an annual review of permit and project from time of certificate of occupancy and have the ability to modify the conditions of approval. Require a letter to corporate regarding the existing stores from the development group. Limit alcohol sales from midnight to 6:00 a.m. And modify provision number 17 to read "display, sale, or rental" of merchandise.
Thank you. Before we get back to this side, one of my concerns about an annual review is there does not seem to be a way to capture complaints so that we can see statistics over time. Am I mistaken in that?
No, we take in complaints at code enforcement and log them, and then we need to prioritize our actions, but they're all logged. So when we do, if you approve the project and we bring back an annual review, we would be able to bring that information to you, as well as communicate with our other departments, such as the police department, to see if there's any calls for service to report as well.
Good, thank you. That's good to hear. Is it also very clearly posted on the planning commission site and on other sites how citizens can complain about issues such as those that were raised today regarding signage, et cetera, that was not, that just frankly didn't seem to be consistent with, with the conditions, et cetera, that we talked about today?
There is information on our website on how to contact the planning department, the code enforcement division specifically.
Great.
As you know, we're updating our website. I think there's quite a few things that could be clearer.
Well, every little bit helps. Thank you for that. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. I was actually struck by Chair Brown's comments about the fact that we've got these, these other franchisees that don't seem to be being good neighbors right now. And is there any way to, I understand that they're separate franchisees, but it's the same corporation overall who's making the application. Is there any, is there any creative way to, to address other, to address complaints or bad acting at those other stores in the scope of what we're doing here, or is that just a whole, separate ball of wax?
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to add conditions to other sites through this process.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, I think we've, we've had a good, robust discussion here, and I am sensing a motion being drafted to my left. Would any commissioner at this point like to make a motion on this public hearing item?
You have to direct me to the motion. I wrote on 60 different pieces of paper. Oh, here you go.
It's on page 11.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the move that the planning commission finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves specific Plan SP 150-15 and use permit UP 41-15 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A as modified shortly, and incorporates all maps and testimonies into the record by reference. Additional requirements would be, item number one, require a more detailed maintenance plan that will include removal of trash at a minimum of two times per day or when the trash is full. Cure any maintenance slash trash complaints within 24 hours. Provide a dimming light system from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on the tower signage. Require an annual review of permit slash project from the time of certificate of occupancy, and have the ability to modify the conditions of approval and to evaluate continued operation of permit, which will be reported annually. Require a letter to corporate from the existing store, or from, excuse me, from the existing developer encouraging the, how did I write that before? It's requiring a letter from the existing developers emphasizing the need to get corporate involved in the existing stores.
No.
Is that what I said? Of all stores. How about all stores? Yeah, City Pacifica. Limit alcohol sales from midnight to 6:00 a.m. Modify condition number 17 to read "in the areas of display, sale, or rental" of merchandise. I had one more condition that I'd like to add, which is provide, within the first year of operation, a notice for filing of complaints in a conspicuous place identifying the place and location to provide a complaint to the City of Pacifica.
Thank you very much for that detailed motion. I see other, Commissioner Vadalas?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. That motion passes six to one in favor. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Next item on the agenda is, uh, there are two consideration items. Continuation of adoption of, item number one, or two technically, is condition of adoption of resolution determining that, that the 2015 to 2020 capital improvements program is consistent with the general plan, continued from May 4, 2015. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, we're playing musical chairs here. Tina Waremeister, Planning Director, thank you, Chair Commissioners. Before you, for consideration, is a resolution finding that the 2015, 2020 capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. This item was continued from May, the May 4 meeting. The planning commission at that time requested additional information regarding the Calera Parkway project specifically, and whether or not this project is consistent with the general plan. A staff report to the city council regarding these specific questions and the appeal of the commission's determination that the CIP was consistent with the general plan last year was provided with the staff report. The planning commission heard oral communications on May 4 and has received several written communications. For the commission's consideration, staff will provide information on two aspects of the Calera Parkway project as they relate to general plan consistency. One is the physical improvement of the Calera Parkway project, and two is the highway capacity. Regarding physical improvements, one resident, Mr. Leon, submitted comments about consistency with the Rockaway Beach specific plan. This specific plan does discuss Caltrans' then existing plans for improving Highway 1. Those included alternative assumptions, including one that widens the highway, and one that retain, and would eliminate businesses, and one that retains the businesses but has a frontage road. This, but the specific plan does not state that the frontage road must be preserved or constructed, or that there cannot be any variation or modifications to Caltrans' plans. Moreover, the Rockaway Beach specific plan states that the decision on the future of the frontage road will be, will be determined when the highway widening, widening plans are acted on. Further, specific plans must be consistent with the general plan, so one must assume that the possibility of Highway 1 widening was considered consistent with the general plan when the Rockaway Beach specific plan was adopted itself. The general plan and local coastal land use plan do not mandate a particular outcome with respect to the widening of Highway 1, and given the city, um, decision makers' broad authority to find the, a project consistent with its general plan and related planning documents, it's staff's opinion that the proposed CIP is consistent with the general plan. Public Works Vano Campo here, Public Works Director Vano Campo is present, and he will discuss the capacity question.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. The Calera Parkway project, as it is currently proposed, is supposed to add a lane in both the northbound and southbound direction of Highway 1 from just about north of Radio del Mar, Radio del Mar, all the way to south of Fassler Avenue. It is, um, it is stated in the various sections of the final EIR that, um, it will increase the capacity over that specific segment of the, uh, highway only. Due to the fact that, um, the configuration, uh, returns back to its normal, two, um, two lanes in each direction, further north and further south, then overall, it does not increase the capacity of the entire Highway 1.
Thank you. Does that conclude this?
Yes, that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to point out, uh, before I ask the other commissioners to, um, to weigh in, is that the planning commission's role is limited to reporting on the consistency of the capital improvement program with the general plan. Their action, our action, neither constitutes an approval of the CIP nor the approval or disapproval of any particular project within the CIP. So we've got a very specific charter here ahead of us. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. I, I got a question for Ichigais. Uh, first in terms of the planning director, thank you for that presentation. You mentioned that the, um, Rockaway Beach specific plan, and the same goes for the general plan as well as the local use plan, all discusses widening the highway, and I think we're about to embark on a, on a discussion, and, uh, what I'd like to do is agree on a terminology because widening, it's too, it's too broad for me. I don't, when you say widening the highway, or when one says widening the highway, I think we need to distinguish between when we're talking about adding through lanes, which is widening the highway, versus widening the shoulders, adding, you know, expanding the median strip, widening the moving lane, widening the existing lanes. All of those aspects of modification to the highway, to Highway 1 are discussed in the planned documents that we have. So I want to be more specific in our conversation when we talk about widening, because that's too vague. So I'd like us, I'd just proposing that instead of saying widening the highway, we'd say whether we're referring to adding, adding additional lanes versus, you know, why, doing other modifications to the highways such as, that do result in widening the highway but are not adding through lanes. Um, I think it'll be a better discussion for us if we're more specific. Um, that's actually not a question, I was just, as a comment, sorry.
And I guess I would just add to that, that for this discussion, we're specifically discussing the project description that's in the CIP.
We're discussing that in terms of its consistency with the general plan, and the general plan has language in it that.
Supports the project.
Has language in it that discusses modifications to the highway that will result in widening the highway, but it's different, very, very different, uh, modification proposals. So I'm just trying to have us be more specific, that's all. My next question, question, this is actually a real question, and it's to, uh, the engineering You were talking about capacity, and it sounded like, so you're, you're defining capacity as changes in the flow rate through the highway as measured between the borders of Pacifica versus changes in the flow rate on the highway at those two intersections. There's, is that a clear question? No one's understanding.
The, uh, the project itself actually talks about, um, it's a true, throughput type of, um, capacity increasing. So it allows for more cars to go through the bottleneck, which is the intersections of both Fassler Avenue and, and Radio del Mar.
Right, right, but you're, you're, yes. And you're mentioning, but you were saying that it doesn't result in an increase in capacity as measured in terms of the throughput from the start of Pacifica on one end and the end of Pacifica on the other. Is that, did I follow you, or did I not, did I misunderstand you?
The, uh, the final EIR that's, uh, was produced by Caltrans for this particular project says that, uh, there is an increase, uh, increase in capacity over the segment that, or the site itself that's being improved. The fact that you have two lanes further to the north and two, it still remains two lanes to the north and two lanes to the south does not potentially increase the, uh, capacity of SR 1 or State Route 1 overall.
Okay, thank you for that.
Does anyone have a copy of the actual CIP language amongst these several hundreds of pages? I can't seem to find it.
Wow.
Exhibit four?
Exhibit four, correct. Is it this?
I don't know if I have.
Project sheet that's on?
Mike?
Yeah. I can't read it from here. I just wanted to read this again for the public record so that we're all on the same page. Thank you. So what is in the, or proposed in the capital improvement program, project number 24, Calera Under the project description, it says this project may construct additional lanes for both northbound and southbound Highway 1 from Westport Drive to Fassler Avenue. The construction will include graving, asphalt paving, installation of drainage structures, traffic signs and markings. The San Mateo County Transportation Authority has taken over the project. And then under purpose benefit, it states, "The project may provide additional travel lanes to both northbound and southbound Highway 1 to facilitate traffic more effectively through the intersections. This will improve the level of service and decrease pollution." And the current year budget proposed, um, out of a complete budget of 15 million, the current year budget proposed is $6,000. Thank you for that. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Um, this is a question for staff, and a big question, I guess, publicly. What is the status of the lawsuit to stop this?
So the, um, there has been a decision in that lawsuit, and, um, the decision was with, with the, with the project. Um, sorry, I'm not speaking very well with this, and, but that decision is not final.
So it hasn't been dismissed, it hasn't been decided on or anything? It's still up in the air?
The, I believe that the judge made his decision, but the decision has not been finalized.
Is it a tentative decision? Is that pending, pending further briefing, or, I'm not sure I follow?
I am not, I am not sure, um, on that.
Yeah, actually, I was going to say the same thing, that there's a ruling already, except that it hasn't been finalized, that's the information we got from the.
So we're still unclear as to the status of that then, one way or the other?
Or whatever way.
One would say that because we don't have anything yet that's finalized.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, let's, just like, you know, I, I've just been reading through these, the local coastal plans from the ages past, from 1980, 89, 92, and, and going through this plan, you know, obviously it anticipates quite a bit of development in the Rockaway area as well as even in the quarry, and there's a whole section in C48 that talks about the Highway 1 and, and its anticipation of, um, even in back in 1985, it, it says that the, uh, in this area, the highway is now at capacity during commuter peak at use hours. Um, so it's been anticipated, it's been included in these land use plans all the way back to the 80s. So, you know, I don't find that this is anything new, um, and it would seem to me, in my opinion, if we were to take out the Calera Peak Creek, uh, project, that it would in fact be inconsistent with the plan because in every other plan, we've had it in. So it seems to me that it is part of, uh, a land use plan, and to ignore it, I think, is, is not doing it justice.
Is that a question for staff?
No, it's not, it's a comment. It's a ramble.
Okay. Someone keep track of how many of those have happened. Commissioner Campbell?
Here's a question for staff. Can you point me to anywhere in the general plan or the local use plan where they talk about adding lanes? That's the additional lanes, I think's the operative language in the CIP, and I'm just wondering where in the general plan or in the local coastal land use plan, 1980, right concurrent with the general plan, does it talk about additional lanes?
So I can't point to a section where it says.
C48. C48.
C48.
How did we get to C48?
Yeah, where's C48? It's okay, I'm reading.
Is it in the attachments?
Big document.
Oh, it's in the local use.
C48.
And where's that, Commissioner Cooper?
It's in attachment four, which is the.
No, no, I'm on page two, okay.
Land, um, City of Pacifica Local Coastal Land Use Plan dated March 24, 1980.
That's the third paragraph down. Care should be taken in widening the highway along the Rockaway Beach frontage, is that?
The whole page addresses it.
Well.
If you look at the second sentence down, "In this area, the Highway 1 is now at capacity during commuter peak out, peak use hours. This congestion hampers emergency access. To resolve these important community issues, a local service route on the west side of Highway 1 is proposed to connect Francisco Boulevard to Oat Shore Boulevard." And then they talk about an overpass, they talk about, uh, increasing the frontage road, they talk about a bunch of things within that, that section.
Well, they, they talk about increasing the frontage road, I get that. Um, and they talk about a local roadway and an over, overpass of Highway 1.
So if you read down the fourth paragraph down, "Care should be taken in widening the highway along the Rockaway Beach frontage to ensure that non-conforming lots and subsanitary uses are not left. Caltrans should purchase entire parcels to establish right-of-way to provide improved sightlines and parking on portions." And it goes on to talk a little bit about, "The proposed highway improvement should also increase the safety of the existing intersection along Highway 1, including access to the quarry and Rockaway Beach avenues."
Right, but that, that's with regard to the frontage road. And when they talk about highway widening, all they're talking about is increasing the shoulder width. They're not, they're, see, and that's what I think, uh, that's what I think Commissioner Gordon was getting at, is that if you take a real careful look at the language here, um, and you look at page, and this is a little bit of comment, but I will get back to the question, on page C122, which, and you go to the Highway 1 language, um.
C112.
C, sorry, C dash 112. Um, you know, it talks about improvements to Highway 1, and it says, uh, when it talks about widening, it's widening the shoulders to deal with the safety improvements. That's the Highway 1 widening that they're talking about in these documents. They're not talking about additional lanes. And the only additional lane that I can find discussed so far, and I'm, and I'm welcome to, to, this is a question, is the frontage road in the quarry, and in fact, um, to that point, when you look at the local land use plan, well, first, when you look at the general plan, and you look at, um, oh, so many documents, you look at, uh, the map, the circu, the Pacifica circulation map, proposed streets, it's right after page 91, there's a, uh, what looks to be in dotted, a dotted line, a proposed street, a frontage road through the quarry. If you look at the local, if you look at the local plan, um, well, in fact, it says, "Because of the limited capacity of the arterial portion of Highway 1 during peak commute and beach use periods, a service road shall be provided for better coastal and emergency access and to facility, uh, facilitate local neighborhood traffic flow parallel to the west side of the highway from Fairway Park to Rockaway Beach. The two-lane roadway design shall include a buffer from Highway 1." Shall, actually, um, which I think's interesting. So that, I guess that's my question is.
I didn't hear a question mark, but.
My, here's my question. Is there anywhere in this, uh, general plan or local land use plan where they talk about widening other than to mean additional lanes?
So I can't say that I can point to specific language where it says that there would be additional lanes, no. I can point to the, uh, analysis that was provided, um, in the appeal that went to the city council last year, where, um, on page four of that staff report. last year, where on page four of that staff report, there are several different policy items from the circulation element, as well as the scenic highways element, which the widening project would further these policies. And the general plan, the general plan doesn't necessarily limit the city in terms of the projects it can consider to implement the policies within the general plan. So I think that the city has broad authority to determine that this project does implement these policies of the general plan, and therefore it is consistent.
So my follow-up question, it'll be a question right away. Yeah, I see that there's some other policies that, I won't call it highway widening, but the increase of lanes would hit. I think a couple of them that were in the staff report where it's going to add bicycle lanes, I guess the scenic quality would be another one, and then safety. But is it the city's position, I guess, that we're asking for this two-lane expansion because it's scenic and riding bike lanes? I mean, that's, that doesn't seem to me to be the real purpose of this. And if it were safety, you would do, it seems like what the general plan was requesting, which is simply increase the size of the shoulders. That would get at the safety issue right there. That could have been done 20 years ago, but... So I don't get it. I'm not quite sure I understand. If a project, incidentally, hits these safety, scenic, and bike elements, well, shoot, you could justify a six-lane freeway through Pacifica that way, right? Am I wrong? Does it create a loophole? No questions?
Yes, good question. So all I could say is that the staff recommendation is that this is consistent with the general plan, and the planning commission will need to consider that and make a determination.
That's fair enough. Thank you. Commissioner Vatterlas?
On C-112, it says, "These improvements would include such things as safety improvements, widening the shoulders and moving lanes."
Moving lanes, but not adding lanes?
Right.
No, but moving lanes are lanes.
Talking semantics.
So it depends how you interpret what moving lanes are. Those are moving lanes.
No.
Mmm.
No, that's not, that's not what that means.
Okay. Good point, because a lot of this is sort of boiling down to semantics, which is why it comes before the planning commission, because at the end of the day, we have to take a current request and see if it's consistent with the 30-year-old vision, where people put a lot of effort into trying to document the kind of city that they would want to have. And nobody's perfect, so we've got questions around widening, et cetera. So with that said, why don't we open this up to the public? I see there's a few people who have expressed interest in talking on the site. Peter Loeb?
Didn't think I'd be up first. Peter Loeb?
Sorry about that.
I attended, I participated in the general plan workshops that led up to that 1980 general plan. I remember specifically sitting in a large group of people, maybe it was in this room, we talked at length about a frontage road in that section, the space between Rockaway and Valimar. That's why it ended up being specifically in the general plan. The plan calls for a frontage road, and all the language that you've just been quoting has to do with the frontage road, not with the highway. The moving lanes is there because what they envisioned was moving, moving the highway over, essentially, moving lanes to make room for a frontage road. And the increase in capacity language that's in that, there should, the improvements to the highway should not result in an increase in capacity, whatever that specific phrase is. The point of that is to say that the capacity of that stretch of the highway should not be expanded, increased, whatever. And I, with all due respect to the Public Works Director, the issue was increasing the capacity of that stretch, which he has just acknowledged that the Clara Parkway project would do, which is in conflict with the language in the general plan, the intent of the language in the general plan. I wanted to also mention that in 1986, I was on the city council from '82 to '90. In 1986, the council, we, there was a study done by the engineering firm of Willsey Hamm. They came up with several alternatives for doing a frontage road. It was very controversial. There were several alternatives, and then there were, there were sub-alternatives, so there was a 1ABCDE, and the 1E modified was the preferred alternative. The whole purpose of that entire experience was to select a frontage road design. That was the purpose of the general plan, the language in the general plan in 1980. It was the purpose for a whole lot of money and time that was spent in the middle 80s to select the frontage road. The Clara Parkway project is in conflict with the 1980 general plan, which is the general plan in operation. I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'll shuffle these, so people don't feel I'm being unfair. Ron Makel?
Good evening, Commission. It's nice to hear this, nice to hear this highway issue just, it's nice to hear this...
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Don't take it personally.
Just keep going.
Do I get an extra minute for this, or what?
We're going for green.
If you need us to stop watching the bell, okay? There we go. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Evans, really, for your reappointment. You guys, I would have, if I was on the council, I would have chosen the same. So really, you guys do it a good job. As a matter of fact, I think all of you are a good, good group of people and work well, and I hope, you know, work well with the new staff. We definitely could use some changes in the planning department. It's pretty antiquated. It has been, at any rate. But it's good to hear you guys talk about the highway. It's something that's really been way understudied. I mean, this is something that should have been brought before the public seriously a number of times, many years, many, many years ago. Should have, the council should have appointed a task force to deal with it, too. So I'm a little sympathetic with the new planning staff, because they're inheriting a real controversial issue that's been going on for a long time. But at any rate, one thing I'm here for mainly is I have a copy from the capital improvement program from the, ending on the year 2012. And this is an issue on San Pedro Headlands Trail. Maybe somebody's read about or aware of what's going on there. But in this particular page out of this improvement program, it states that the trail was completed, 100% completed, and the cost was $252,000. But the current page that you have in your book there says that the project is not completed, and it's going to cost $6,300,000. So that's a big difference, $250,000. But my, the main issue here is I hope, I'm really annoyed that this issue didn't come before the planning commission years ago, when this was going on. It really should have come before you guys, so you guys could have looked at and just, could have saved the city a lot of time and money and a lot of negative energy that came out of this issue. And I hope that this trail, when it, issue does come before you guys, because I think that you're an important part of the protocol of the city in terms of, you know, evaluating issues and setting government policy for land use. Anyway, I just want to point that out, this Peter Headlands Trail. I hope you guys kind of look into that a little bit for me. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mary Kittleman, please.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here about the Clara Parkway. I just want to say that the Clara Parkway highway widening is not consistent with the general plan and the local coastal land use plan. Either the Clara Parkway should be removed from the CIP, or the planning commission should not adopt the finding that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. And for people who are new here, I just want to say that alternatives have not been considered. The project has not come to the public conversation. Lip service, that there were alternatives were considered, certainly, we've heard that, but when they were assessed, there was no realistic address to alternatives. One in particular, after 30 years, technology has really changed. The federal government, the state government are using intelligent transportation systems, ITS. It's in use on 280. It's in use in Hong Kong. It's in use in Akron. It's all over the country, and it's a fraction of the cost, and it gives us none of the massive cement that this proposed Clara Parkway would offer the city, which is going to take almost five acres of the quarry if it's approved. The public, this is a controversial project that the public does not approve of by a majority so big that the election, the most recent election, put in a brand-new candidate who nobody ever heard of, and gave an incumbent the most votes ever based on this issue. It was a key issue in the past election. So I would just ask the commission to find that, remove the Clara Parkway reference from the general plan, from the CIP, sorry. I don't think we can plan for funding for a project that is controversial, hasn't been discussed, is very, very vague, as Commissioner Gordon's initial comments just show how vague the project is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Hal Boner?
Good evening, Commissioners. Okay, I don't know quite what to say here. I've submitted a lot of documents on this, and I hope that you've had a chance to read them. To summarize what I've said in many pages in three minutes or less is pretty much impossible. A couple of things, just to say that the Clara Parkway project is inconsistent with the local coastal land use plan and the general plan and the Rockaway Beach specific plan. It is inconsistent, and, like I say, how to summarize all that in three minutes is difficult. If you have the Rockaway Beach specific plan in front of you, I don't have the same packet you do, so I don't know where to point you to it, but it was something that Leo submitted. Anyway, you don't have that?
I don't think we have that.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry. That's, Leo submitted that and asked that it be considered, and anyway. I will just make a note for you, then, that if and when you have a chance to look at it, if you would look at page 27, you will see a diagram that's very, very instructive here. This is, I say, the Rockaway Beach specific plan, which was intended to be consistent with the general plan and the local coastal land use plan. It has a diagram, a cross-section of Highway One north of Rockaway Beach Avenue, and it shows two lanes of traffic heading north, two lanes of traffic heading south. It does not show a third lane north or south. That's the specific plan, okay? Yeah. Time's running out here. Anyway, I recommend, I guess I would say one thing, I would really ask you, if you have specific questions, either call on me, I'm in the audience, I'm happy to answer them. I would strongly recommend you to ask Peter Loeb to come back and give him some more time. He's got a lot of personal information about this subject, as you started to get a little bit of that, and he's got a lot more. What he has to say is very important. Anyway, there are many of us who are opposed to the Clara Parkway project, and thank you for taking up this issue.
Thank you. Next up, Chaya Gordon?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. So the question before us is, is the 2015 through 2020 capital improvement program consisted with, consistent with the general plan and the local use plan? And the problem, as other people have said, is that it includes the Clara Parkway project. And the Clara Parkway project is inconsistent with both of those plans in a number of ways. I'm just going to cite a few of them. One is the 1980 general plan, which is in effect, says the capacity of Highway One should not be increased. The Caltrans plan increases the capacity of Highway One, and I disagree with Mr. Ocampo's characterization that it's just for a little bit. That's the little bit pregnant argument. It doesn't hold water here. The second example of inconsistency is the 1986 Rockaway Beach specific plan that's been referred to. Specifies the frontage road, and it's my understanding that this can only be changed by the coastal commission. No one has mentioned the coastal commission, but they're an important part of this whole thing, because this area is under their jurisdiction. The frontage road is to be built west of Highway One, connecting Francisco Boulevard to Old County Road, and this frontage road is clearly not in the Clara Parkway project plan. So that's another inconsistency. My third example is the existing general plan and local plan states the pedestrian, a pedestrian bike pathway should be on the frontage road, but the Clara Parkway plan puts it on the parkway. So what I believe is, these are not semantic differences, and I know that that was mentioned a little while ago, and I think that's always an important thing to look at. These are really big changes, and there are more examples, if you can go through the plans. But I wanted to mention, what does California law say about these inconsistencies? And a California Supreme Court case in 1990 directly addressed this, Citizens of Goleta Valley versus the Board of Supervisors, and found that the propriety of virtually any local decision affecting land use and development depends upon consistency with the applicable general plan and its elements. This means in plain language, you have to follow the applicable general plan, the one that's currently in effect, and you can't just ditch it if you want to. So I would like to respectfully suggest, and I appreciate the care that you're looking into this with, that the commission performs due diligence here, for whatever reasons that have gotten us to the point where we are. It is not in accordance with the law and promotes a plan that the people of Pacifica -- indicated they do not want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a little more time, right? Nope?
Thank you very much. Dan Stegink.
I'll be brief, because I've already wasted enough of your time tonight. I just wanted to bring your attention to what I believe is an inequitable fee funding this. It's called the Highway 1 Improvement Fee, PMC 8-15.04. That's the numerical equivalent of August 15, 2004. Basically, it charges everyone south of Sharp Park three times the building inspection permit fees of everyone north of Sharp Park. South of Sharp Park, you pay $4,400 per bedroom. North of Sharp Park, you pay $1,200 per bedroom. And that goes all through residential down to commercial also. Essentially, it's an inequitable tax. Everybody below Sharp Park is paying for three times the amount than everybody above Sharp Park. And that's commercial and residential. I also wanted to mention that part of the Caltrans easements you're talking about are a 1978 project. Caltrans had a 20-foot easement on the dry side of Cabrillo Highway, all the way up from the south part of the city to the north part of the city. And that would essentially prevent building, any homes, buildings, whatever, within 20 feet of Cabrillo Highway on the dry side. And that is what I believe Mr. Cooper was referring to, some of the language that is evolved from there. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Dan, thank you, and please, it's not a waste of our time to have you speak in front of us and present your opinion. In fact, it's greatly appreciated. Next speaker, Charles Davidson. Cynthia Kaufman.
That would be me. I wanted to start out by saying that I was really impressed with the deliberation earlier, and I just appreciate the democratic process that happens in this town, and that you're not just rubber-stamping things that are coming from staff, but that you're listening to the public, taking what they say seriously, and deliberating really thoughtfully. And I want to really ask that we do that with this project as well. I don't want to repeat what the other speakers have said. Just very briefly, I do want to say that the Calera, that the highway widening project is inconsistent with the general plan. The general plan is the constitution under which we are functioning at this moment. I was very concerned with what Mr. Ocampo said earlier about the highway not increasing capacity. I think that's ludicrous, right? I mean, the point of that project, which is looming above us, is to increase the highway capacity. I'm very concerned about the fact that there's a tremendous amount of inertia behind this project. Just to give one example, when some of us were working on the Climate Action Plan, the folks who were working on that felt very strongly that this project would increase greenhouse gas emissions in this town, and they were directed by the city manager, the then-last city manager, to not include that project in the Climate Action Plan. And they went along with that because they felt like they had to. My sense is that the staff, there's a tremendous amount of inertia in the old staff to have this project happen. The townsfolk have spoken and said, "We don't want this project." That was clearly seen in the last election. And so I want to ask, now that we have a new planning director, I'm really excited that you're here. I think we've had some really good changes in staff, and I really want us to take this seriously, and I want you to take your role as our representatives to really look at this project and really look at if it's consistent and not just kind of go with the inertia. The last point I want to make is the safety one. I know that that's not really what's at issue here, but every once in a while, people says, oh, people will make a comment about the importance of this project for safety. And I just wanted to reiterate that there's nothing safe for my 12-year-old child about crossing six lanes of traffic. And this project was specifically, Caltrans has said, it was not designed for safety. The frontage road probably would help with safety. This project was not designed for safety. It's tremendously unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Stan Zevan.
Leo Leon is out of town, and he asked me to read the following message for your consideration and deliberation on the Calera Parkway issue tonight. This is from Leo. Earlier this week, I sent you and the planning director copies of the Calera Parkway Highway 1 cross-sections, one from the Caltrans Calera Parkway EIR and one cross-section of the Highway 1 design from the Rockaway Beach specific plan. I ask that you review and compare these cross-sections. Here are some of the reasons why the CCP is not consistent with the GP and the Rockaway Plan. The 1986 Rockaway Plan is part of the 1980 GP. Both plans contain specific descriptions and diagrams of a frontage road on the west side of the Highway 1. See page 75 in the 1980 general plan and page 20 in the Rockaway Plan. The frontage road from Maury Point to Rockaway Beach is the city's design to remedy congestion on Highway 1. Page 79 of the GP describes the service road as an extension of Francisco Boulevard and Bradford Way at Maury Point. On page 79, Coastal Access Section, the GP says that the north-south pedestrian and bike path should be placed on the frontage road on the west side of the highway. The cross-section of Highway 1 north of Rockaway Beach Boulevard is on page 27 of the specific plan. The CCP roadway cross-section from the Calera EIR is not consistent with the Rockaway Plan. In conjunction with Highway 1 improvements, the Rockaway Beach Plan, page 17, section 3.2, paragraph 2, speaks to two Caltrans design possibilities. One design is with businesses remaining, and the other is for removal of the businesses. The analysis of these two possibilities was not included in the EIR by Caltrans. This omission is inconsistent with the GP. In summary, here are three instances of the Calera Parkway being inconsistent with the general plan. One, omitting the frontage road with its pedestrian and bike path. Two, omitting consideration of the specific descriptions in the Rockaway Plan and GP. Three, omitting consideration of removing or not removing businesses. After considering all of the above and the comments of others here tonight, you must decide if the Caltrans Plan is consistent with the 1980 GP and the 1986 Rockaway Plan. Given the inconsistencies and omissions I mentioned above, the best option for the city and for everyone is for the Planning Commission to find that the Caltrans Calera Parkway Plan is not consistent with the Pacifica general plan, Rockaway Beach specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Suzanne Johnson.
I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and my family has had Pacifica Play School in town for over 55 years, which serves an average of 75 families per school year. I've also been a resident of Pacifica myself for 27 years. I am here on behalf of the Chamber, and as a business owner and a resident, to strongly urge the Planning Commission to keep Highway 1 improvement as part of the capital improvement program of the general plan. My daughter lives in Petropoint, and to leave Petropoint and even go across Highway 1 to Lindemar Shopping Center, she has to go through two lights, which are not sync. She works at our family business located in Fairmont, and trying to get to work in the morning with the commute traffic and coming home during the evening commute is an absolute nightmare. It is so congested. It takes up to 45 minutes to go six miles on some days, which should normally only take 10 minutes. I used to go to Lindemar to eat at the restaurants and shop a lot more than I do now because of the congestion. I have a lot of parents in my facility that do not go down to that end of town on the weekends. Instead, they'll go over to Ceremony because it's less congested, it's quicker to get to and to get back. So we would like to urge you to please keep the Highway 1 improvement as part of the capital improvement program for the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I only have one more card, so just want to make sure there's no one who feels left out. So if you want to speak on this topic, please submit a speaker's card. Darlene Gonzalez.
My name's Darlene Gonzalez, and I'm president of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I've been a resident for 45 years, as well as doing residential lending in the community for over 26 years. It has come to our attention that the commission is considering removing the Highway 1 improvement from the capital improvement program of the general plan. We would strongly like to recommend that you keep this included as part of the general plan, since it has been a part of the plan since at least 2004. We strongly need to do something to help with the congestion on the highway, as it, as the intent of the capital improvement within the general plan is not to increase capacity, but to decrease congestion. With the increase of the congestion, starting at Sharp Park going south, all the way to Devil Slide, it is so congested that my clients tell me they will not even come to Pacifica during the morning, afternoon commute hours, or the weekends, due to severe traffic congestion. This has not only impacted our residents, but visitors who would be spending dollars in Pacifica. I myself used to shop down in Lindemar or Petropoint on the weekends, and it's gotten so bad, the backup, you know, even coming from Lindemar or down Crestby, it takes me about 45 minutes to get down to the highway, where it used to take me like seven minutes. Most of you know there is only one way out of Pacifica, which is Highway 1. God forbid we have a major accident or disaster. In this, in the letter dated December 19, 2006, written by former Mayor Pete DeJarnett, he states in his letter to John Lee, Chairman of the San Mateo County Transportation Authorities, "This segment of Highway 1 experiences heavy congestion during both morning and evening peak hours. In fact, the congestion management program of San Mateo County identifies this same segment as having the worst level of service of LOSF. This portion of the highway is extremely vital to the coastal highway system, for it proves it's only link between the north and the south coastal region of San Mateo County. Traffic engineering professionals from various sectors view the proposal Calera's Parkway project as the only viable solution to the worsening traffic congestion. In conclusion, please, Pacifica Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors strongly urges the Pacifica Planning Commission to keep Highway 1 improvement as part of the general plan." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last speaker, Jill Allen.
I have nothing prepared here, but I did want to just address the last two speakers talking about the congestion down by Lindemar. And I live down there, and that congestion is due to the bridge construction, which I don't know the name of the bridge, but anyway. The lanes are blocked off, so going toward Half Moon Bay is a nightmare. And it's been like that ever since the construction started, so I just did want to let you know that. Thanks.
We are just so fortunate to have a bunch of folks like yourselves who are so well-informed and passionate. There's a lot of material here to consider. Unfortunately, I don't believe we have everything in front of us that's been referenced, which is one point that I would like to make. It sure would be helpful to get these materials earlier than Thursday before a planning commission meeting. I don't feel like I'm as qualified as the rest of my commissioners in terms of their experience and their professional expertise. I rely on reading these materials and talking to the public to inform myself on these matters. And I didn't have as much time as I would have liked on this one. Next, I also, I want to apologize, I didn't mean, when I said semantics, et cetera, to trivialize anything that's going on here. It's a complicated issue. We're being asked to see if something's consistent. And I think if we focus on specific words, we might get tripped up. I think that, you know, the legal arguments, et cetera, I thought got into semantics, and I think we have to rise to the point where we're thinking about what is the intent of this plan in its entirety, and there's several pieces to it. When I think of that, I think of, there's a great sentence here. Page C112 of the land use plan, which, let me be a little bit more specific, the local coastal land use plan dated March 24, 1980. The sentence reads, "Because Highway 1 is Pacifica's lifeline, its appearance and safety are critical to the city and its future." I found that a pretty good statement. And then the next piece was on, in the circulation element, I'll just paraphrase one of the sentences, item 12 in the policies. One of the things we're being asked for is that street improvement standards without violating safety or character of the existing neighborhood. I have been fortunate enough to have driven and spent a fair amount of time on every single mile of Highway 1. I'm just going to put it out there, I don't see in any way, shape, or form how turning this into a six-lane highway, or freeway, whatever the word is, but adding two lanes, adding all that concrete, adding all that width, adding all that extra walking distance, biking distance, is consistent with the general plan for this community. Let me open it up to the rest of my commissioners. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair Brown. I want to thank the members of the public also who came and spoke, and also who have been dedicated to this issue. You know, all have been educating me, and I deeply appreciate it. So the question before us is whether, the only question before us is whether the CPP, the Calera Parkway project, is consistent with the general plan, which includes the Rockaway specific plan and the local use, what's it called? I'll just say the LUP, the Local Coastal Land Use Plan. All those documents were drafted in the 80s, and it's very odd that we have to make a decision today, tonight, about whether this proposed project is consistent with a plan that was drafted so long ago. But that is what we have to do, and one of the reasons I'm saying that is in the staff report, it repeatedly referenced, you know, a document from 1980s, you know, do we really have to, are we really bound by that document? Well, we are until the city, until we pass a new one, until we amend it or pass a new one, and until that time, we're bound by it and what it says. On the other hand, the general plan, typically speaking, a general plan, it's general, it's not, a well-drafted general plan shouldn't be a handcuff to the city for future planning purposes. It should be guidelines, but it shouldn't be, typically, they're not intended to lock future development in. So that gives me an orientation when I look at the general plan and I start reading it, you know. In order to find a project inconsistent with a general document, like the general plan, I really have to see something in the general plan that says, wow, that's really inconsistent. Just for me, it has to be more than just kind of on the fence. And there are, there is, there are problems in terms of finding consistency, there are, the general, if you look at it, there's a template for the general plan, I'll just dive right into it. Basically, it was, it acknowledged that there was congestion issues in Highway 1, and it said, you know, the favorite approach is to address that by having a frontage road, a two-lane frontage road from, what was it, from Rockaway up to... a two-lane frontage road, from, what was it, from Rockaway up to, up to, what, Fairway? Or something like that? Anyway, basically, adjacent to the quarry. And in terms of the improve, and it also contemplated improvements to Highway One, there's no doubt about that. And those improvements are laid out in C112. Ironically, it's the language, it's the page that Commissioner Brown was reading from, but it's the language right above it. It says, "In the coastal corridor," let's see, "Safety and operational improvements are to be made to the arterial portion of Highway One in Pacifica. These improvements would include such things as safety improvements to intersections, widening the shoulders and moving lanes, providing a median strip, signalization, and turning lanes. The intention of these improvements is not to increase the capacity of the roadway." So I will tell you all where I am with this analysis, which is, to me, this is the key language of our, of my analysis. And when it talks about improving Highway One, it's very, it's pretty specific. It does not include adding through lanes. It says widening the shoulders and moving lanes, I don't think that means, when it says widening the shoulders and moving lanes, I don't think that means adding through lanes. And I think that that's proven by the next sentence, which says, "The intention of these improvements is not to increase the capacity of the roadway." I was asking Engineering about how he interpreted capacity, and it seems as though they're interpreting capacity as not capacity in terms of the intersections at Reyna, and intersections, and the intersection at Fassler, but the overall capacity of the highway, the fact that above and below those proposed improvements, it would still stay two lanes. You know, and that's definitely one interpretation of that sentence, of how you interpret capacity. If you interpret capacity as the capacity at those two intersections, though, this language says, "The intention of the improvements to Highway One is not to increase the capacity at those intersections." If you interpret it that way, there's absolutely no way that you can find that the general plan's consistent with this document. I just, I think there's a very, very high burden to be met, to find inconsistency, but if you do interpret capacity as being segment capacity, I think that burden is met, I don't even think it's a close call. On the other hand, you could, I hope my commissioners are following me on this, you could interpret capacity as, as the way Engineering, Mr. Akampo is just explaining it, as, well, no, they're really, what they're really saying is, is you can make all these highway improvements to Highway One, as long as you are not increasing the overall movement of traffic through Pacifica on Highway One. And if you look at it in that broad perspective, I guess arguably, improving, you know, the flow rate through those intersections, isn't necessarily increasing overall capacity. So therein, for me, that's another of the question. I was very interested in, Peter Loeb is, was one of the speakers, he was, in the practice, I'm a lawyer, in the practice of law, when you have an ambiguity in a document, and you've got to figure out, well, how do I resolve this ambiguity? What you typically do is you look at the historical record, to find out what people were thinking about when they wrote the language that's ambiguous. So I was paying very close attention to what Peter was saying. At this point, I am interested in delving more into the historical record, and finding out exactly what the drafters of this document meant when they said Highway One improvements should not increase capacity. Because I think that kind of, I think the whole, well, in my view, I think the analysis turns on, if you interpret that as being no increased capacity at that, where the improvements are supposed to happen, or no increased capacity in a bigger picture, anyway. So that's my comments for now, and I'm sure, I can't wait to hear the comments of my esteemed colleagues.
You know, one thing that I think does get to some of the intent, is on page C113, second-to-last paragraph. And again, per Peter Loeb's comments, it's discussing the service road, which, as Commissioner Campbell rightly pointed out, it states, "A service road, because of the limited capacity of the arterial portions of Highway One during peak commute and beach use periods, a service road shall be provided for better coastal and emergency access, and to facilitate local neighborhood traffic flow, parallel to the west side of the highway from Fairway Park to Rockaway Beach." This is the part that I pay particular attention to, "The two-lane roadway design shall include a buffer from Highway One, and then, which does not obstruct the view of the coast, but softens the sense of paving through the area." That seems to tell me that, you know, we have to be careful about adding more concrete between us and the beach. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the info I'm getting, and overwhelmed with, and especially my colleagues who are lawyers. I am not a lawyer, and maybe I'm just dense, but I keep going back to the same thing of, what happens if we approve this, and they rule in favor of the appeal? Can staff answer me that? Can anybody answer me that?
I can't answer that specifically. I do know that the city attorney's office was not concerned about this action specifically impacting, or being impacted by the judge's ruling.
I just, Commissioner Gordon had a lot of good points, and specifically in certain spots. I'm torn, I'm, yes, there's problems. There's problems with those two intersections, there's problems with, I've gone through that area between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning, and you don't go through the area, it's a parking lot. But, does, the one thing that is in front of us, is, does it meet with the standards of the general plan? And even with the question of the law, with, if it's judged in rule, in favor of the appeal, that set aside, I don't know if it meets, as Commissioner Gordon said, I don't know if it meets the standards of the general plan. So I'm torn. I keep going back to the law thing, though, I'm sorry, again, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm torn as to understanding how it cannot be an issue if the courts rule in favor of the appeal. So that's, I'm more confused now than I was before, so, if anybody can help me on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks to everyone who's commented so far. Thanks again to the public for staying late on this Monday night. Yeah, one of the things that we look at when we're looking at ambiguity, especially when something was written in the past, and this, if we were to analogize this to legislation, one of the things that we would consider is specificity in language, and the idea that when someone's drafting something, be it legislation or general plan, if they have the opportunity to be more specific, you know, they know how to do that, if it's more specific elsewhere, that makes some sense. So, you know, here, when we're looking, when I was looking at the general plan, and I was looking at the local land use plan, the council appeared to get very specific about what it meant by widening. You know, it adds very specific language about that it was with the shoulders, and they had very specific maps, it's the only place that maps really, talk about the quarry, and they talk about a frontage road, and they talk about, you know, very specifically how that, both those are going to deal with safety. And so, you would think that if, when they were drafting this general plan back in the day, if they'd wanted to talk about adding additional lanes, they would have, because they had ample opportunity to do that, and they didn't. The other thing, too, is I did take a look at the Rockaway special plan from 86, so that was a few years later, and there they would have had another opportunity to talk about highway widening, in the context of adding more lanes. And there, again, given that opportunity to do that, they didn't do that. And again, if you look at actually what one of the commenters has provided us, you know, it's on page 23, and we don't have it, and I'd written it down, but it talks about, you know, Caltrans is completing its plans for proposed improvements to Highway One, adjacent to the planning area, and this plan assumes two possible futures for the highway frontage. One possibility that is shown in the diagram is for the highway widening to eliminate some existing businesses from the highway. And they point to the figure that was provided us, and the figure shows just a two-lane highway, and then it talks about knocking out some of the landscaping and things to deal with that widening. But I think, again, the widening they're talking about is with shoulders, and not adding another lane, because you wouldn't add another, I don't think you would, you know, I think when they're talking about the frontage road, if they were also talking about adding lanes, I think they would have like tried to make that all work, and they just never bring it up. And so it's one of those things where, you know, we have what we have in this general plan, we have what we have in the local land use plan, and is the concept of adding additional lanes to Highway One consistent with it? I'm stuck with the answer of, I can't find any support for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Niblin?
Thank you. I have to say, I think that Commissioner Gordon did a really professorial job of sort of laying out kind of the issue, and I was really quite impressed with your analysis, and I certainly would say the same as to Commissioner Campbell's, well, everybody's perspectives on it, but I think that the, sort of the analytic template you've laid out is spot on, and I appreciate some of the comments with respect to sort of the tools we use, and I think those are the appropriate, some appropriate tools to use, as we try to figure out, in the context of ambiguous language, you know, what we ought to be doing, sort of the specificity of the language that was raised, and sort of the fact that in many instances, he took the opportunity to be quite specific, and that is a guide, and sort of trying to figure out sort of legislative intent, to the extent that we can go back and look at that. You know, the other principle that, you know, occurs to me as I think about this, is sort of, when you have a situation like this, sometimes administrative law, when you're dealing with, you know, sort of, a number of possibly reasonable constructions of ambiguous language, sort of the deference that we would oftentimes afford to staff or administrators who are, you know, sort of charged with, you know, trying to figure out what ambiguous language means. I don't think that, I guess in my own perspective, that it's unreasonable to find this project consistent with the general plan, given the ambiguity, I think, that we all note exists. So my inclination, with due respect to my colleagues, is probably to land in a different place.
Commissioner Cooper?
Great discussion, everyone. I think that there's some very thoughtful arguments, and some thoughtful reactions behind the use with the general plan. You know, looking back at the general plan, I do have to agree with, you know, with all my commissioners, is that it needs to be flexible, in a sense. I mean, it does give you a guide, and I think a plan is a guide. No one thought that the quarry would still be vacant, you know, in response to the concrete paving, you know, well, if you had a frontage road, you'd have concrete paving, so, you know, we're putting some concrete paving on a Highway One to solve this issue. You know, I would agree, you know, with Commissioner Niblin, that I think that there is ambiguity here, and I think that the way the plan is written from the 1980s anticipates that something needs to be done. We've heard from the communities, from people in the community, from the Chamber of Commerce, that we have a problem. There is a problem in Pacifica with this highway. You know, we look to, well, what are the solutions? And the solutions, they gave some examples in these old plans of some solutions, some possible solutions, but again, I think the plan needs to be flexible. So, you know, I'm actually in favor of adopting the resolution in this circumstance. I think we have a problem that we need to solve, I think the plan is ambiguous in some sort of senses, but I think that I'm leaning more towards reading it to say, hey, you know what, we anticipated that there would be issues, we don't have a frontage road, the quarry's not built, we have an increasing population, we have a new tunnel, we have a new bridge, people want to get from north to south, and we need to address those problems as a planning commission. So I'm probably in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Vadoos?
I'm not an attorney either, and I may be incorrect in this, but by passing this, I don't see that we're passing this specific Calera Parkway plan. And I think that if we don't pass this, then are we eliminating any chance of having frontage roads? Because this is about safety, it's about less greenhouse gassing by allowing people to go through faster, and not stopping for long-time periods. And I think that we haven't gotten to the Calera Creek Parkway project yet, we're just talking about, we could be exactly talking about what they said in the general plan, in my opinion, and I'm in favor of going forward.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, again, I think, I think all the comments up here have been well-thought-through, and I just want to add that if you, you know, as to changing circumstances and being flexible, if you do, if you do go through the general plan, the local land use plan, you know, they actually did talk about the tunnel, and they did talk about a lot of the things that we've discussed up here today. And, you know, yes, the general plan is from 1980, but, you know, just because it's old, doesn't mean that, I imagine that the folks who probably came up with this plan, and did all the workshops, and really went through the trouble of coming up with it, and thought through the strategy for the town, you know, they, I don't know if I want to necessarily kind of, I guess, marginalize their work, like, much as like I wouldn't want anyone to marginalize our decisions in five or six years. So, there's that, and I do, but I do think, to Sue's point, Commissioner Vadoos' point, is that I do think we are talking about adding the lanes, additional lanes, and I don't think, in the CIP, we're talking about the frontage road, because it is entitled Calera Parkway, and I don't think that has to do with the frontage road, I think that deals with the two additional lanes. So I just want to kind of clarify that. Thanks.
Thank you. I thought, Commissioner Campbell, I thought your arguments about the ample opportunity, you know, it just, in my mind, that really highlighted the thought, the thinking, the intent that went into the general plan. Commissioner Niblin, I'd like to hear your argument one more time, if you would.
I don't think it was so much an argument, it's just an additional factor that I considered, and that was the amount of deference, I think, staff's interpretation is entitled to, with respect to what I consider to be ambiguous language, what is an appropriate reading of the general plan, and the other plans that we're looking at in the context of the... at in the context of the, in the context of this particular project? And recognizing that there are a lot of ways that we resolve ambiguity in the context of language like this. So it wasn't really any more sophisticated than that, frankly.
Okay. Thank you for repeating that. I appreciate it as we're all trying to make up our mind here. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. It's a fair point to evaluate staff's, their views on resolving, on addressing the ambiguities in the, in the general plan. I didn't, I was not aware that they addressed the ambiguities.
I think I was more focused specifically on the issue of the capacity. What does it mean to say we're increasing capacity? I think I was.
Right. Where did you see that analysis?
I think I heard it in the conversation of today. That's where I was drawing it from.
And I think I'm getting to another point, which is that I don't think that we've really, you're all going to hate me when I say this, everybody probably, but I don't have enough information, I was not given enough information and I really haven't had the opportunity to, I mean, again, the right way to resolve an ambiguity is to dig into it. If staff had in fact dug into it, then I would be right on board with you about giving deference to them. I don't see any attempt, I don't see any analysis of the historical record by staff in terms of what they meant by capacity. I mean, I would love to bring folks back from the 1980s up here and say, what the hell were you, what was going on? What was in your mind? Or, you know, read actual, I mean, I would be really interested, for example, in finding out what kind of historical record there is, you know, back from that time period in terms of, well, what were they, what did they have in mind when they said? Because the one thing that is clear is they said Highway One improvements shall not increase capacity. Man, that's really important language. I mean, I'm actually, I'm not, for me to find inconsistency, it's not enough for me to look through all the language in the plan documents. And the fact that they never talk about adding through lanes to Highway One wouldn't be enough for me. I mean, because, and I don't think it's there. I mean, I've asked staff, I've asked the city attorney, I've asked a lot of folks, find me language that says that in here that says Highway One, you know, a viable option, for example, is to add through lanes to Highway One. It's not there. They didn't do it. But for me, that's not enough to find inconsistency. Because I think you do need to give deference to of the flexibility of a general plan. I think it's very, very important to do. Not only for this project, but generally, I mean, there's going to be other projects that come before us and lord knows, you know, this needs to be treated with a wide girth. And I think it's all very important for us to do that. So the lack of, the lack of language in here that says, okay, thumbs up to Highway, to adding through lanes, that's not enough. There has to be something affirmative in here that's affirmatively inconsistent with adding through lanes. And potentially there is. And that's why I'm focused on that language that says, you know, the highway improvements shall not, or are not intended to result in increased capacity. Because that is, if you look at it in one way, then that is the affirmative language necessary to find inconsistency. In terms of resolving the conflict, I guess I disagree with Commissioner Nebelen because I don't think that staff has really looked into that sufficiently. And I would like, I would be interested in having staff do that. Finding what there is in the historical record that could shed light on this question to resolve this ambiguity, which I think could be dispositive of this question.
That's it.
Commissioner Nebelen?
If I might, if I might ask, what is the timeline statutory or policy-wise or otherwise with respect to acting on this resolution?
So we would need, we're hoping to get Planning Commission action this evening.
That I understand, but my, what's the?
Well, yeah, we would need your decision prior to the CIP going before the City Council during the budget process. And it's scheduled to do that on June 8th. Yes, June 8th.
Ah. So, and I guess I'm not completely clear on, well, I get, you sort of articulated some of the things you think through the chair, some of the additional things that you think might be useful in connection with the analysis and the amount of time it would take to get that information versus the amount of value it would add to the dialogue we're having here. I'm just sort of thinking about my mind as I'm contemplating a motion to continue.
I think that's a good point. So, so what if, what if the capital improvement program, plan, correct me, did we approve everything else in it except this one item? Is that what we did or did we, did we have a continuance on the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay. So let me just pose a little bit of a hypothetical. What if we approved everything except this one element? Or this one project, Project 24? It doesn't really mean we're killing the project. It just means we're not, we're saying that spending funds out of the capital improvement plan for the Calera Parkway is not consistent with the general plan, right? Is there some other way that the, if the forces that be decide that this needs to move forward, is there some other way that the Calera Parkway project would move forward if we say no to including it tonight? And it's fair if that's too much of a hypothetical, but.
So I think that there are several options in front of the Planning Commission, which are, find the entire document consistent with the general plan. You can revise, potentially revise language related to Calera Parkway project. You could remove the Calera Parkway project and find the remainder of the document consistent with the general plan. Or you can find the entire document not consistent with the general plan. So, so all of those items, you, we were asking you to make a decision tonight and then it will likely be in front of the City Council on the 8th for a final decision.
Right. So thank you for laying out the options. My question is, if we decide to move forward with the capital improvement plan without the Calera Parkway project, what happens to the Calera Parkway project after that? Because we're only talking about $6,000 being requested for spending this year out of 15 million, but does this, I mean, I don't, I don't really understand what not including it would do other than express to the City Council that we don't think the project or the proposal is consistent with the general plan.
Chair Brown, if I may respond to your question. What's before the Planning Commission tonight is whether the, I mean, the CIP is consistent, not for you to approve the budget.
I understand. But I'm just going, does it get extrapolated to something bigger? Because, okay, I withdraw my question.
Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted, I think that's a good point that Commissioners Nebelen and Gordon have raised about the ambiguity and giving deference. And I had just a slightly different take on it in that I think I would probably agree that if the general plan said nothing about adding additional lanes, that might not be enough. There needs to be more. There needs to be something else that's affirmative, right? And that's, that to me is on, I mean, it's C113, that affirmative command of City Council back in 1980, saying because of the limited capacity of the arterial portion of Highway One during peak commute and beach use periods, a service road shall be provided for better coastal and emergency access. That to me is the affirmative command that gets me over that hump, that resolves that ambiguity for me. That, that shall language in legal terms, that's, we all, that's something, that's a command. That is like what you're going to do. Why it didn't get done, I don't quite understand, but that's the affirmative language that I think gets you past the, you know, just the non-existence of, you know, or it gets you past the ambiguities.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Fair point, Commissioner Campbell. I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the devil, what is it? Take the, I'll be devil's advocate for a sec and on that and say that even with the fact that that is definitely, you shall, we, you know, we shall build the frontage road, that's very clear, that's inarguable. And if, if it was, so the question is, is, does the fact that it says, frontage road shall be built, is that inconsistent with another option?
Resolving issue.
You know what I mean? Is it inconsistent with adding lanes to Highway One?
But wait, there's more. There's also, there's also the map, which shows it. And there's, which is another level of specificity, which again, if there was any consideration of throwing a double lane on Highway One, they could have easily, easily broken out the Sharpie and thrown it in there, but they didn't.
I don't think it's, yeah, I think you're absolutely right. They were not, I mean, there was no consideration, there was no contemplation, I think, at that point in time in the 80s of adding two lanes to Highway One. I don't think that's, I mean, it's nowhere in any of the plan documents. I've talked to folks back from the day and they said, it just wasn't on the table. They weren't thinking about it. So I, you know, that's, that's definitely clear. But, you know, I still don't think that's enough. And is the directive to build a frontage road, and the fact that the maps, you know, the maps definitely show the frontage road, the fact that the maps don't show the added lanes, is that enough? I'm just, I'm thinking in a broader picture of, you know, where you, where you have maps in a general plan and they don't contemplate different ways of handling something that nobody thought of back in that day, you know? I get a little uncomfortable with saying, well, you know, that rises to the level of inconsistency. So for me, I need something, I'm a little bit different from you. I need something that says, no, you know, like, that's why I'm focused on the capacity issue. Because for me, if it's really, Highway One improvements should not result in increased capacity, man, that's, there's no way to reconcile adding lanes and not adding capacity. There's just, it's a, they are irreconcilable concepts. But anyway, whatever.
Right. Well, if you hang, I mean, the one thing with capacity, yeah, sorry. Chair Brown, you got it.
Commissioner Vadoos?
In 2014, this was appealed. Is that the, I have a question. Is that the lawsuit that's not settled or is this something different? Did they lose this appeal in 2014 for the same item?
This, this item was appealed to the City Council?
Uh huh.
And the City Council found, at that time, last year, the Planning Commission found that the CIP was consistent with the general plan and it included the Calera Parkway project. And that decision that it was consistent with the general plan was appealed. And the City Council upheld the Planning Commission's determination.
Okay. And also this, in the CIP, this is Calera Parkway and the consistency has been in there since 2002?
2004.
2004.
2004.
2004. It's not a new issue.
Oh, it's not.
It's been considered consistent since 2004.
Hello?
Oh, wow, we're lighting up here. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to go back. Okay, if, if the appeal was upheld, what's the litigation going on now?
You know what? I am not up to speed on the litigation and able to answer that question.
Okay, but it, that litigation has not been decided.
It's, it's not pertaining to the CIP.
No, but it's the same issue though. Consistency.
It's pertaining to the, it's pertaining to the consistency of the Parkway, correct?
With the general plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Responding to Commissioner Vadoos' good point that in fact, this issue has been addressed in last year when the same, very same issue was appealed to City Council that, you know, we had found that the CPP was, that the CIP was consistent with the general plan. And then folks from the public appealed and the City Council heard that appeal and decided against the appeal. And then linking in Commissioner Nebelen's comment about deference to the city in terms of their opinions on these matters, we have before us the transcript of that appeal hearing. So, and I read it and it's a very interesting read. And is that, I think the staff report attached that. And if you read it, it gets to my point again, that man, there was very little analysis by the City Council, that point, on the ambiguities that we're delving into right now. If you read that transcript, it's just, there's, there's very little in it regarding the ambiguities that we're talking about. So it's, again, it's hard to give deference to, it's hard to give deference where the matter wasn't, I feel properly vetted.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, after, I was just going to say, after reading the transcript of the proceedings, virtually none of the issues we're discussing tonight were discussed at with any, at any level of analysis like we're doing, like we're doing now. It's really unclear what they were talking about when they were talking about widening, for example. You get the sense that they were taking at face value that the general plan, when it talks about widening, was actually talking about extra lanes and not, and not shoulders, for example. This is one. And then they made a lot of the fact that we had, you know, considered this issue before. But, you know, we're all here, we didn't consider this issue before. It was stuck in a three, you know, 100 pages, hundreds of pages long CIP, we just blew past it, quite frankly. So, you know, it really wasn't adequately considered by us in the past. I think now it is because we have all this material before us. I think this is the first time we've really, really considered it. So, yeah, it's been in the CIP for a while, but I think this is the first time that we've actually been kind of given the heads up that, hey, this is an issue we should really actually kind of dig into.
Looks like things are slowing down. Is anyone ready to make a motion? He made the last one. Why don't we let Commissioner, is that Evans?
I'm going to throw something out just to see where it goes. I'm, would be in favor of making a motion to approve the CIP without the Parkway in it. it. I don't know if anybody else would.
I meant to, I meant to comment on that motion.
Doug Campbell, I'm gonna skip you. Commissioner Cooper?
I don't know if I'd be in favor of that motion, I think that the rest, they're coming, people are coming to us to look for an answer here, and, you know, we've had a lot of opportunity to look through the documents, and I, you know, we say that we haven't, but the issue comes to the meaning and the intent of the general plan, in my opinion. We'd have a problem in Pacifica, we have a problem with the highway, they're asking for us for a solution, and whether or not it falls consistent with the CIP. The CIP has anticipated this issue to be an issue for City Pacifica, and I think that it addresses an option, and I think that we need to give deference to the general plan and its ability to grow with our, with our, with our issues that we have today. And the fact that the quarry was not built, and the fact that we do not have a frontage Parkway, there are other ways to resolve this, this problem, so I would just make a resolution to adopt that plan, but I'll leave it up to the other two people.
Well, I, I personally would be in favor of Commissioner Evans' motion, and I absolutely respect your opinions and reads, I just feel that there's enough in here with respect to specificity and the thoughtfulness and the intent, from what I've hear, I would love to know more and get firmer on this feeling, but I, I, I think that, I'm convinced that, from what we've seen, the Clara Parkway project is not consistent with the general plan.
Um, do you want a chair? Is there a second on this motion?
No, so we're just talking about
I thought
We're anticipating
Anticipating, so
We're happy
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I would be in favor of that, and, but I can't second, so. And you made a counter, so I'm trying to break that.
You're just canvassing.
Um, Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, yeah, I would support Commissioner Evans' proposal. I think that there's enough here, there's enough in the record to, for me to be very comfortable, that a two-lane is not compatible with the general plan in any way, shape, or form. I don't see the ambiguity, and I don't see any place to provide deference. And I think the only thing I would say is, you know, I would, I would say, we knock it out of the CIP because it's not consistent with the general plan, just to make that clear. But other than that, I would, but yes.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, my light's on, you gotta call on me.
Okay.
So I
Commissioner Gordon?
I am the, I'm, again, I'm, I'm on an island here, I, I don't have enough information before me to say whether the CPP is consistent or not with the general plan, so it makes, so I'm, gosh, I guess I concur with Commissioner Evans' motion, because I'm not ready to approve the CPP as part of the CIP. At the same time, I wouldn't characterize that as a, as a statement that it, that it's inconsistent, I would rather see it, that aspect be continued and be brought back to us with more information about the historical record as to whether it sheds light on the ambiguity, but I'm sure I'm the only one out there on that.
Just one second, 'cause I have the feeling we're making a procedural mistake here. And correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but if we, if we have a motion
We need a second.
And are we allowed to have this conversation between the motion and the second?
We made the motion, yeah.
We made a motion?
And then we, you need a second
We started having a conversation about that motion
I'm sure I said second.
I think there is a second.
I, I know there's a second, but now, but just bear with me for a second. So A, were we allowed to have a conversation between the motion and the second?
You need a motion and a second for discussion.
Got it. Okay.
Can I have a review of the motion?
So now we have a motion and a second.
By Evans and a second by Campbell, is that correct?
Okay, so before we go to vote, could you repeat the motion, and then let's have a discussion?
Gosh, I don't even know where the motion's at. Just, I move that we, is this it? Move that Plan Commission adopt the attached resolution entitled "A Resolution of Plan Commission of the City of Pacifica Finding Proposal 2015 to, Proposed 2015 to 2020 Capital Improvement Program as Consistent with the General Plan and Local Coastal Land Use Plan Except/Leave Out the Parkway."
Okay. Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you. I, I don't support the motion, but I was interested in what Commissioner Gordon just said. I, I think that if there was a motion to continue either the item in its totality, or at least the item as it pertains to the Parkway project, I'd be interested in seconding such a motion.
I'll make that motion. Oh, what motion? Boy, so the problem is, I know, that's correct. It's just that it's not gonna get enough votes.
Just a moment, just a moment. We have a motion on the table. Before we put another motion on the table, I think, is there any more discussion on what we've got?
Do I need to amend my motion to add in that we will look at a later date?
If there was a, if you would accept a friendly amendment with respect to your motion to continue that particular aspect of it, that, I suppose that would be possible.
I'd rather keep the motion clean without that, and maybe somebody can make a motion after this, to bring it back.
Okay, I'm in a little bit of new territory here, but I think what we've got is a motion and a second, and we've had a good discussion, and I'll vote. That motion does not pass. Three in favor and four against. Very well. Do we have another motion? Commissioner Gordon?
I'll move that we approve the CIP with the exception of the CPP project, and with respect to the CPP project, that it be continued for the purpose of staff providing us further information that could illuminate the relevant ambiguities as we've discussed at the meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner Nebelen?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now let's have a little discussion. I'd like a little more specificity on what additional information we're requesting. I'd like to add the Rockaway Beach specific plan as one of the items. Is there anything else that people would, that my fellow commissioners would find helpful for additional information? Commissioner Nebelen?
If there were arguments that the city attorney or city staff advanced in connection with the litigation, the sequel litigation that was filed in the Sametail County Superior Court before Judge Weiner, or whoever it was that, that had the case, I'd be interested in knowing if there's anything in there that was, that would be relevant to the conversation we're having now.
Commissioner Gordon?
You're talking about the litig, I don't know, you're talking about the litigation that was filed
It's for the writ of mandate, I think. I, I might not have that quite right, but I know there was Superior Court litigation.
Right.
And again, I'm not 100% sure whether there's anything in there, or a lot of it that would be relevant to the conversation, but if there was, I'd like to
That's great, that's fair. I, I'm interested specifically in finding out, I mean, there must have been, for example, workshops, you know, just like we're having, we're trying to amend the general plan right now, which, by the way, if it was amended, we would have not have to have this tortured exercise. But just like there's workshops, that, there have been workshops recently, and I'm sure there's, there's a written record of what was discussed and what was considered, if there's, you know, this is done all the time, when you've got a statute and there's an ambiguity, there are services that actually will search the historical record with respect to that ma, that subject matter. So to the extent that, and the subject matter isn't the general plan broadly speaking, it's specifically as it relates to addressing the congestion issue on Highway One, I think that's probably how we, that's the scope of it.
One of the things specifically that would, I think would be helpful is, was a additional lanes considered and specifically not included?
Good point.
Because I, I, I appreciate your, your deference to the staff opinion and the legal argument made recently, but I find myself more drawn to, this plan is specific in some very, in a lot of areas on this, and, you know, I want to get to the intent, and I think knowing what other options were considered and not specifically included would be helpful. I don't, I don't think that means we need to change the motion. I think we've just sort of fleshed it out a bit. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Is everybody clear on what the motion is?
Why don't you repeat it one more time?
The motion is that we approve the CIP as being consistent with the general plan, with the exception of the CPP project, and with respect to the CPP project, we, that matter is continued in terms of whether it's consistent with the general plan to a further date to allow staff to provide us with a more information regarding, for example, the historical record, whether adding lanes was ever considered but not included, the lawsuit that Commissioner Nebelen was discussing. Do you have enough? Is that enough? Yeah? We could go on.
We could go on.
No, she wants more.
Right. Commissioner Cooper, did you have some?
Do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, please.
Can we set a date for that, like, the next commission meeting? Because I'd like to see if we can do this before it goes to city council.
That's a good point, is that possible?
We will try our best.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'll vote. And that motion passes 7-0.
Before we move off this item, I just wanted to clarify that Leo Leon, his comments were via email, and those, and it did have a link to the Rockaway Beach specific plans, there was some discussion as to whether or not that was given to you guys, so I wanted to let you know that that was forwarded to you all and put that on the record.
Oh, thank you very much for that factual correction. There is one other item for consideration, which is the reorganization of the Planning This, oh, is there a staff report?
Um, no, I think you guys know what to do with this one.
We're required annually that all, all commissions and committees are reorganized annually, and we shall elect one of our members to serve as chairman and one to serve as vice chairman, and the, these positions shall be rotated amongst the members on an annual Commissioner Gordon?
As if I haven't talked enough already. I just wanted to give you guys a little background, typically what we do is, we go in order of seniority in terms of, you get, the, the most senior person becomes vice chair, and then they, they, the next year, the vice chair gets elected to chair, and then you just, you could keep rotating through fresh blood, so that the most senior person is, is, is chair until they're not, and then the next most senior person becomes chair for a year, and then they're not, and then blah, 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 anyway, hopefully that's clear. Last year, we goofed up, just, that just so happened that I was appointed vice chair, and in fact, Commissioner Campbell was more, is more senior to me by a year, and he should have probably been appointed vice chair instead of me. So we kind of goofed that up. So what, what I would propose is that we fix that, and that Commissioner Campbell be nominated, well, I'm gonna nominate Commissioner Campbell for chair, and I just stay put at vice chair and bide my time. And then after that, the next person most senior to me, and again, if it, like, for example, I think Commissioner Brown is the next person senior to me, but, but because he just served, he's not gonna be, he's not, it's, it's one of the new folks, 'cause I think Commissioner Evans also just served. Anyway, that's just kind of a broad overview, and I'm sure in a couple years' time, there will be all new faces on board, and so it won't matter, but that's kind of the outline I propose. I can't nominate myself for vice chair, so I won't, but I will nominate Commissioner Campbell for a chair.
Thank you for that nomination. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I was actually going to go old world and nominate the vice chair, Josh Gordon for chair.
Okay, things are getting, heating up. Commissioner Nebelen?
I'd like to move that we, well, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Campbell for chair and Commissioner Gordon for vice chair.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. I'll vote.
Oh, it's not working.
And the lights go out.
I'll vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioners Gordon.
Just real quick, thank you, I know that was unsolicited by me, and I appreciate it, so, thanks.
Next, communications section, are there any commission communications? Okay, seeing none. Oh, God. Yes, it's Commissioner Gordon.
Wait a minute, no. I withdraw that, I can't comment, I'm sorry, 'cause
You've been a great vice chair, by the way.
May it always be that eloquent.
I know.
I withdraw that.
Okay. Staff communications?
So, I just had a thought this evening, I'm, I've heard a lot of comments about the timing of the packet coming out, and, and I know that maybe previously, there was the ability to provide the packet a week in advance, and it's becoming very difficult because of how busy we were becoming. We prepare our packets not only for you guys, but also for city council on the alternate Mondays, we also do the, the OS pack committee. And so one option, which maybe you guys can roll it around, is to change your meeting date to a date later in the, in the week. So we would still, we would still commit to getting you the packet on Thursday, but instead of a Monday, you can meet whatever, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that would give you a little bit more time, but giving it to you a week in advance is just not, I can just tell you, it's not something that we can commit to. So I just, you guys don't have to answer now, we can maybe talk about it again under oral communications next time, I just wanted to throw that out to you, that it is, it's, it's really not, not 'cause we're, we don't have anything to do, we're just
No, thank you for that.
Can we comment?
No.
I don't actually think we can, but thank you for that, I appreciate, I appreciate the constraints you operate under.
It's not an agenda item.
Talk about it next week.
So let's, let's talk about it next week, or next time. Oral communications, this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Ron Makel.
I got my three minutes right away here. Anyway, I like to say, I think you guys broke the Guinness Book of Records up there, taking the longest amount of time to approve a CIP, but that's all right, it's good to break records, and I know that there were some of you up there who would have, rather have taken the road less traveled, but it's a touchy subject, the highway. What I'm here for, actually, is on, you know, the oral communications schedule, being the last thing on here, for many, many years, at least, I, I used to be on the commission and oral communication was up in the front, then we, of course, the council had a problem with a particular speaker who was very, very disruptive, and it kind of affected the psyche of the council people from the beginning of the meeting, so they changed the meeting, so they changed oral communication to later on in the meeting. And then planning commission followed suit, which probably wasn't necessary. But anyway, considering the fact that sometimes you guys have lengthy meetings here and people have to wait, you might want to consider, I don't know if you have to agendize that for discussion, but I just thought I'd bounce that off you guys to give it some consideration, get, give people a chance to talk and get out of here, you know, so that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Is there a motion? Commissioner Cooper.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Vadalas. All vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. This meeting is adjourned. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Thank you very much. It just worked.
Much for multitasking.
Thank you, Josh.